If you've got it through this back, it's still good.
Oh, yeah. All right, you guys ready? Okay. All right, welcome, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. This is the Town of Fishkill Plan and Work Meeting on July 13th, 2023. And this is called to order at 7:02 PM. So if you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, with my mission, under God, the individual, liberty, and justice
Okay. We're going to have six voting members present tonight. Jody Burka indicated that she would not be able to make it, and also one of our alternate members, Kevin O'Connell, will not be able to make it. So given those circumstances, I would like to appoint VJ Gopal Escalante as a voting member for tonight's meeting. So, thank you, VJ. All right. The first order of business is a continuation of a public hearing from last month's meeting. This is for Duchess Storage, formerly known as Cube Smart Self-Storage Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Applicant seeks the following approvals for the project known as Duchess Storage, located at 1574 New York State Route 52, and also 1576 Route 52. This is in the general business zoning district. The site development plan and special use permit consists of constructing a climate-controlled self-storage facility on the former Cube Smart Self-Storage Facility parcels. Two buildings are to be constructed in two phases. Phase one consisting of Building 1, a 97,275 square foot, two-and-a-half-story structure, and Phase 2, Building Number 2, an 18,150 square foot, two-and-a-half-story structure. Parking spaces, I won't get into all the details, loading spaces. So again, this is a continuation of the hearing that the board opened at the June 8th meeting. Therefore, we do not need a new motion to open the hearing. Also, welcome to the applicants, but it's not necessary to give another overview because we already have that on the record. So unless you have any preliminary comments you'd like to make, I want to see a show of hands to see if there is actually anyone in the audience who is here to speak tonight on this particular matter. And if we don't see anybody, I will not bother reading the rules of conduct. So just want to make sure there's nobody here present to speak at this, at tonight's meeting on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, we did, Nichols, Ward, Willis, we're keen to meet on behalf of the applicant, Duchess Storage. We did have a meeting with DOT. I can have our update of the board now, or we can wait till your comment and review session of the interview meeting if you like. What is your preference?
Well, if there's anything relevant, and again, I was going to mention at some point probably during the review that we received a letter just today from New York State DOT, so we can go over that. But if you have anything that you think is relevant, you know, for the public to know before we close the public hearing, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Very good. So just briefly, at the last meeting, there was a discussion about whether DOT improvements would impact this project. So we reached out and held a meeting last week with Cassandra Biville, DOT, along with two of DOT's design engineers. Mr. Bodendorf was there on behalf of the planning board in the town, and we were advised of their intent to, that the creation of a roundabout at the Route 252 intersection is a funded project scheduled for 2025 build. They're in the midst of the design. There are still preliminary aspects of those designs. They had previously issued a DOT permit for our project, and during the call, they became clear they did not want the entrance, the exit, the emergency exit onto Route 82 to be proposed, and they wanted that eliminated. You've seen that in their letter. And they explained why, because of the roundabout that they need for the cars to accelerate and de-accelerate, and they didn't think that was safe to have that. They also expressed their desire for sidewalks to be created along the frontage of our property. And we had a full discussion of how this would all work because we were ready to continue with the project. As you know, it's already built and designed, so we want to have that work continue. And they recognized that what they would do is issue us a temporary construction permit so we can have a construction access onto the road, and that as they complete their design, they will bring us into the fold, and we will work out the geometrics and geometry of the entranceway so that the project can continue. But at the time we need to close out the project, they believe they'll be at the point where they'll have finalized their design, and then they would issue us the permit for the final entranceway. And that seemed to be acceptable to the applicant, town representative, and the DOT. And so that is also why you got that letter today from the DOT.
Yeah, yeah.
I also want to alert the board to other developments that we have received in the name of the new applicant. You may recall, project was previously approved, permits were issued to the old applicant. The new applicant has received from DEC, the SWIP, and the notice of intent, and we provided that to the town today. And additionally, we are going to be doing some work on the site, some minor work. Our insurance company is requiring that we fix the fence, remove some debris from some, just to clean up the site to reduce risk on the site. So we just want the town to be aware of that. There's no actual construction activity towards the project, it's just site cleaners working, and we want you to be aware of that. And so we have no objection to that work.
Do you need to get any kind of permit for that, that type of?
No. From my review of the letter from the insurance company, no. It literally is just removing some debris that's on the site, as well as repairing holes in the fence to secure it. I mean, I'm not sure that requires a building permit, but we'll let the building department know that work as well.
Yeah, that would be appreciated, yes.
I had no further updates from the board today. Do you have anything else? I, yet again, present a word from speaking, so thank you.
Well, I'll mention the DOT letter that we were both referring to, which dated July 13th today. We just got it earlier today. And it basically reiterates what you were saying. They didn't mention anything about the sidewalk, but I'm glad that you brought that up, and that's good to hear. So that will take care of that. So actually, I'll give the audience one more chance in case anyone came in while we were talking, to see if there's anybody who would like to speak to the Duchess Storage proposal during this public hearing. And I don't see anyone raising their hand, so let me turn to our counsel, Dominic, to see what you think about closing the public hearing tonight.
Mr. Chairman, with no one present wishing to speak, I recommend that you close the public hearing. This is a continuation of public hearing from last month.
And John Bodendorf, do you have any, anything to add to that?
No, I would just add that the summary of the meeting with the DOT was, was accurate. I, you know, everything he said was exactly as I heard it.
All right. We also did receive a letter from the County Department of Health, which I'll, we won't get into that now, but I'll mention when we get to the project review. Okay. Well, would anyone on the board, if anyone has any questions first of all, or any comments? And if not, if anyone would like to make a motion to close this public hearing?
No questions, and I'd make the motion to close the public hearing for Duchess Storage, a site development plan and special use permit.
All right, Anthony moves closing the hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
And I see we do have all seven voting members present, as Fred has come in while this was going on.
Sorry about that. That was the traffic on Route 52.
Oh.
We turned a village. Ten minutes.
Fifty-two, okay, that's what I was wondering, through the village, all right. Just as our comprehensive plan update has mentioned in a number of places, that that seems to be a problematic area. All right, so that's it for the public hearing. We have one request for an extension of approval. That's the Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan, or to review submission made by the applicant's representative on June 28th, 2023, which requests a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval that the plan would adopt it on September 8th. I've recused myself in the past from participating in this application, and will continue to do so tonight, so I'll ask Vice Chair Anthony Brozier to please take over for this agenda item, and I'll just stand right by the door.
It'll go too far this time.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Hire.
Good evening, Joel Hire, here for Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses.
We have your letter dated June 27th requesting a six-month extension of your approval, which was granted last September. If you wouldn't mind just briefly going through that memo, I know there was a few items that you were still working on. It'd be important just to, for the public and for the board to be aware.
Absolutely. So as required in our resolution, we submitted all of the conditions in March, March 22nd, for review by the town engineer and the attorneys. We got the engineers reply back in March. We got the planning board attorneys reply back in middle of May, and we got one comment from the town attorney on the stormwater agreement in May as well. But then it was just June 20th that we got his first comments related to the performance bond, and why he's rejecting the performance bond, and why we have to take an alternate method for that. So it's just the time, how close we're getting to the expiration date. So that's why we're asking to have that six-month extension, just to finish those last few things up.
And just to mention, I know one of the major items that we had requested as a condition was the, the pre-construction noise study.
Correct.
That is among the items that have been completed. I just want to mention that as an item, because that was a big topic of discussion.
Correct. All that's still out there is the, the resolution calls for a performance bond, but then the very last sent clause in that says it can't be a performance bond. And so that's according to the attorney, and so that's what we're working on. That clause says it has to be a cash deposit for the bond, for the surety, a bank account or a letter of credit. And so we are working on adjusting that to be able to submit it. And then the other thing was the stormwater maintenance agreement, that's the other one that was outstanding, and we're just waiting for a comment back on the surety funds for that, that it's acceptable, and then we'll be submitting that.
Many comments from the board members about the extension request tonight?
No.
At this point, I'll, I'll turn to our consultants and just ask if there are any comments or questions regarding this extension request. John?
I don't have any.
Dominic?
No, I would recommend that the board grant the extension.
And it would be okay to do so? I know the, the approval ends on September 8th, so technically we could grant the extension at next month's meeting, but there's no concern with extending sooner?
In fact, I mean, the, the board has, there's no hard and fast rule on this. What I would recommend is, is that the board grant a six-month extension running from September 8th, so that we'll provide six months from that time. That covers the fact whether or not, you know, if there's a lack of quorum at a meeting or anything like that, so it's just handled at this time.
Okay, thank you. So with that said, do I have a motion for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for the site development plan for Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses, the six months being taken from the September 8th, 2023 date?
John moved.
Fred?
Fred moves it, and Felix seconds. Any comments?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention for John. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, actually, this is another extension, okay? This is a slightly different version or type of extension, but this is for 415, 453, Route 9 subdivision, or to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on June 28th, 2023, which requests an extension of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for the subdivision that the planning board adopted on February 9th, 2023. So are you Christopher Fisher?
I am chairman.
Welcome. If you could just kind of give a brief explanation of how things have changed with the site and why the extension is necessary, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Chris Fisher from the firm of Cuddy and Thader here on behalf of Hudson Properties. Also with me this evening is Jeff Ringler from Hudson Properties. As we outlined in our submission, since the time of your approval, our contract been DCHI acquisitions, terminated the contract that they had with us in order to be able to move forward with the project. Notwithstanding that, our client, the property owner, is interested in moving forward with this project, and obviously believe in it, think it's a good development for the site. In order to do that, we do have to fulfill conditions of your approval. Many of the conditions of the subdivision approval, which we're seeking an extension of this evening, are your standard requirements that we obtain approvals from other agencies, including DOT, DEC, and the like. Hudson has retained the same project professionals that were used throughout the process. We're in the process of moving forward with those agencies in order to be able to obtain their approvals. We would expect to come back to you as a board at some point, submit evidence of all of that, and request that the chairman be authorized to sign the plat. We're going to need some more time. The approvals under just state statutory rules and your own regulations for subdivision would technically expire in August. We're asking at this time, as authorized by the statute, a resolution, a 90-day extension through November, so that we can make additional headway on these requirements under your conditions of approval.
Thank you. And I understand that all arrangements for the escrow deposits have been made. So, you know, we're confirming that with our planning secretary, Debbie.
Yes.
Dominic, do you have any concerns with any of the legal aspects of this request?
No, sir.
And John, any, any thoughts from you?
No, no comments.
Okay. All right, well, this, I, I just have one question that's not really related to the extension, but if you can tell us anything about a timeframe for the expected demolition of the vacant dilapidated buildings on the site, that would be good.
My expectation would be when we ultimately get through all of the entitlement perfection here, subdivision, site plan, and these conditions, that we would in the normal course apply for a building permit and a demolition permit, and that it would be, at that point in time, that we would clear the site and ready it for some future occupancy. I mean, we have some work to do with the property owner on how that will proceed, but so the timing is a little bit variable at this point, but the normal course would be at that point in time.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments from board members?
No.
All right. All right, well, do we have a motion to approve the request for a 90-day extension of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final subdivision approval for 415, 453, U.S. Route 9, now being pursued by Hudson Properties LLC, extending the approval to November 6th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Felix moves it. Was that Anthony seconded?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we have a request for a readoption of an approval. This is for the Ducci 2-lot subdivision, or to consider the applicant's request for a readoption of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval, and to review and consider the adoption of a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final reapproval. So this is the Ducci 2-lot subdivision. Welcome, Mr. Ducci. We discussed this at last month's meeting.
Yes.
And so we had our attorney kindly prepare a draft resolution that he's done, so why don't we just ask Dominic if, if you would review that very briefly?
Yes, as the board may recall, Mr. Ducci's time to file the plat unfortunately expired due to difficulties and issue in connection with the Town of East Fishkill, given the location of his property. And more than 60 days passed, and he was not able to file the plat within that timeframe. He had satisfied all of the prior conditions of the approval. But the, to compound matters, the resolution of approval had also expired at the time when he was needing a further an extension. And so at the last month's meeting, we discussed this, and the board authorized me to prepare a new resolution of approval. This is basically a reapproval which would restart the overall clock for Mr. Ducci, which would give him hopefully plenty of time to satisfy any outstanding concerns that the county clerks may have in connection with his plat. And as I noted previously, he had already satisfied all of the conditions of that approval, so it's fairly straightforward.
Any questions from board members?
No.
Any questions, John?
No.
All right. Any questions from the applicant, Mr. Ducci?
No, I'm still working on it with East Fishkill, but I'm pretty sure we got it pretty well set with that, with their requirement, I think.
All right.
Hopefully, I can get it all worked out.
Okay, well, yep, I've, I've had a chance to look through the resolution also, and it does look very straightforward, and it seems to cover everything that we need covered in it. So would somebody like to make a motion to, this would be to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary and conditional final reapproval for the Ducci 2-lot subdivision as reviewed tonight, and to authorize the chair to sign it?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
That was Fred seconding it, I believe, over on my right.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That resolution passes seven to zero. All right. Well, thank you for coming again, and we hope that things go a little bit more smoothly this time with all the things you need to tie up.
Good luck.
New submittals. So this first one is 14 Corus Lane, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Applicant seeks Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit Approval to utilize the existing single-family residence located at 14 Corus Lane as a professional staff office during the renovation of the existing Duchess Manor, which is intended to be used for staff offices and a visitor center, and will be the subject of a future Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit Application to our board. The parcel is identified as tax map parcel 595300603192, located at 14 Corus Lane, immediately south of the existing Duchess Manor on Route 9D, consisting of 5.63 acres in the R2A zoning district. So this would be to refer the application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Duchess Junction Fire Department, and the New York State Department of Transportation. And the planning board will allow informal comments from the public after discussion of the application. So I know that the applicant has submitted the required application fees and escrow deposit. Thank you for that. So welcome. I know Amy Kokawa is the executive director of Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail, so we'd be happy to have you explain the proposal, and I think you have maybe a short presentation on an update on the overall trail project, so that would be great. We are going to have a very long agenda, so if you can keep that fairly short, but we, we would love to hear it. And who do you have with you?
Yes, my name is Helen Moch. I'm a partner in the law firm of Minster Moch and your environmental and land use counsel for Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail. Thank you for having us this evening. Amy is going to give a short presentation, but before she does, I just want to mention that one thing that was not included in the cover letter to your board is that what we're talking about tonight, this, this application, is a type 2 under SECR, so I would just want to bring that to the, to the board's attention as, as this goes forward. And it was written in the cover letter, but I'll just remind the board that HHFT will be coming back to the board once we get through this approval process for 14 Corus Lane in connection with the adjoining Duchess Manor lot, which will be used for HHFT offices and visitor center as, under the special use permit regulations with, which authorize charitable institutions and special permit uses in both zoning districts.
All right, thank you.
Can you hear me all right?
Make, make sure you got right up close.
There? Better? Okay. So I will keep this brief, but you were asked to just provide an update on what this project is, so you understand the context of the request. So the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail is a planned 7.5-mile trail connection between Cold Spring and Beacon, and it crosses, of course, through the Town of Fishkill and past Duchess Manor. This project has been in the hopper for about 20, almost 20 years. It started in Cold Spring with this understanding of need. Breakneck Connector was getting increasingly popular, our Breakneck Ridge Trailhead was getting increasingly popular, and creating safety concerns on 9D, emergency rescue demands, and the train station was also unsafe. And so a coalition of partners, including the Town of Fishkill, got together to really think about what to do to remedy this situation there, and also to create this larger connection and asset for residents. And so Sinek Hudson has been in as a lead partner. Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail is a subsidiary nonprofit under Sinek Hudson, so we're very much aligned. And so this crosses two counties, four municipalities, lots of public lands through either New York State DOT, Metro North, and most significantly, state parks. So lots of partners at the table, and Town of Fishkill has always been one of those lead members. So the vision is this, to create that trail connection between Cold Spring and Beacon to serve the four trailheads accessible from 9D in the Hudson Highlands State Park Preserve. This will include creating parking for people to, and a shuttle service to take people to those trailheads to remedy unsafe conditions there, and also create new connections where they don't currently exist. The project has been designed for sea level rise, so everything will be above sea level rise, which we just had an unfortunate reminder of, right?
Wow, yeah.
With extreme storm events as well. We're seeking to have as much of the trail as possible be an ADA facility, so we share use path that's ADA, particularly at the southern end, but we're also aspiring to the same for the forest section. This shows we're really trying to have- This shows we're really trying to have this trail be an environmental education tool as well, really helping people plug into the different aspects of this landscape from the river's edge, the rocky Highland mountains, the forest, and the marsh, and create education moments along the way. So this just shows you the main trail through those four zones. At the river's edge, south to north, we work. In the Highlands, there's a bridge connection, which the town of Fishkill was also a key member in a DOT process to have a new crossing of the train tracks approved. And so that has gone through, and we're planning to issue this bridge for, well, New York State Parks will be issuing the bridge for construction later this year. And then trail through the forest, mostly crushed gravel, but would conform to ADA specs. And then the marsh. We're building in some moments where there's either a kid-friendly moment or just spaces of rest, and that helps augment the accessibility beyond just ADA slopes, but spaces of rest or where there might be a particularly interesting view. There's a lot of curiosity about Bannerman's Island and the castle, which leads to a lot of trespassing and nuisance for neighbors, so we hope to remedy that with this trail. Immersive meanders, where people can just go down a hiking path or go into Little Stony Point and spend time on the beach, but it'll be still kind of plugged into this main trail. And then destinations, one of which is what we're here to discuss today, well, almost, Duchess Manor as our headquarters. So we are a small but growing nonprofit organization. We've been created to build this and then ultimately maintain the trail with staff on the ground. So this would be our headquarters in the future. And so the request today is about what we need is temporary office space while we do the restoration of Duchess Manor. That would be our visitor center ultimately, and that is part of the destination. People can come there, park it oriented to the space. So this whole project is about creating safe connections. A lot of what we do, including some of the recent projects we have completed on the ground, protect habitat by controlling where hikers are going and keeping them out of places you don't want them to go. We're trying to also help conditions of overcrowding and congestion in the village of Cold Spring by spreading them north, giving people more places to go, distribute them so it's not all the south-based flow to Breakneck Bridge, hopefully augmenting local economies by channeling and communicating where other people might actually tack on experience, and just really celebrating this region and all the recreation assets it has. So I already said this, but we're here to operate and maintain this in the long run, and that will be done as a nonprofit, so this doesn't really have that taxpayer impact for operating the space. So we've been in various phases of planning, but we've also started to build and open some pieces. One thing we built over a year ago was the Ninham Trail in partnership with state parks. That is actually operated by state parks, but it is a safer ascent route for emergency responders or a descent route for hikers who have overcommitted on Breakneck. And so that's really worked well to reduce safety calls and provide emergency responders an alternate route to the scramble route when they have to go in for a rescue on Breakneck. We've also partnered with Metro North DOT and state parks to make early safety improvements to the Metro North train station. As you recall, that's yellow stairs out there, no fencing, no nothing. So now there is fencing, there are anti-trespass panels around those platforms, and ultimately we'll be building new actual standard platforms instead of those yellow stairs. So the first phase, and this is set to go to construction later this year, Breakneck Connector would be constructed by Hudson Highlands Fuhr Trail, and as I mentioned, the bridge would be constructed by state parks. We're working in close partnership on this. And that will focus on this one-mile area from Breakneck Bridge to basically the pedestrian overpass for the southbound train platform. So this will include a trail, new train station platforms, new parking, controlled parking in that area where compared to the current condition, stormwater enhancements. We've already completed upper overlook, I'll talk about that in a minute, and new bathroom facilities that are not currently there. And that just shows that. We have recently completed the upper overlook. This is relocation of the Breakneck trailhead further up the slope and stabilization of bad erosion conditions on the trail and construction of this new steward station for stewards. They had been in a tent by the tunnel, we've moved them up the hill and given them a permanent location. The bridge constructed later this year is shown here, and so it'll be a repeating arch accessible for DEP to access their facility, our staff, emergency responders, but otherwise not open for vehicular traffic. It is principally a bike pad route. And this just shows you the bridge and how we have track protection built into the design for the railroad. So as I said, later this year, that will be put out to bid probably in September for the bridge and hopefully construction starting in the winter of '23, '24 with a two-year timeframe, so it should be opening in the spring of 2026. And that's it.
So do you want to just give any more brief explanation of what'll be involved with renovating the existing residential structure at 14 Corus Lane into an office type of space?
Our plan is not to make any physical modifications, like not making any additions or anything. We're using the existing structure in its current format, maybe making some cosmetic upgrades, and obviously, I think we'll have to go through and make sure we have all fire doors and exit signs to be in conformance with safety regs for an office space. But other than that, it's really using the building, just using it differently. We have a small staff, at least seven right now.
Any questions from board members so far?
What do you plan on doing with the house after you move into the big building?
We may need to keep it for staff use for a little bit longer if we run out of space for trail staff, but otherwise, we haven't determined what the future of the structure is. It could be subdivided, it could be, we haven't decided.
Yeah, so the application is really not classifying this as a temporary use per se, which would, you know, have implications, I guess, but it's, I think, if any other use came up that you wanted to do, it would possibly require another application at some point in the future. Good question, Fred. One question I had is that the proposed site plan shows that there's an easement for the existing private driveway connecting 14 Corus with the Duchess Manor site. Is it possible that you could provide us with a copy of the easement at some point?
The shared driveway agreement?
Yeah, yeah. Preferably before the August meeting. That would be helpful.
Sure.
And then the plan also shows the possibility of some landscape buffering between the future office use and the adjacent house to the south. So I was wondering if you could provide us with just the most basic sort of, we would call it a landscaping plan, but, you know, nothing very fancy, just showing the locations, types, and sizes of plants that you would intend to use?
Sure. We haven't, we've discussed it in concept with them so far. They do want one, but we haven't designed one, so sure, we'll bring that forward.
So again, if you have something at least preliminary for the August meeting, that would be good.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Also talking? Is it going to be?
So if you look at the site plan, I don't know if you, can you access that to show the site plan? There is parking shown on the plan.
But is that enough for what they're, you know, you just said you're going to run out of space, it sounds like.
So maybe if you could just run through how many?
There's not a parking for the manor.
Just show how many, tell us how many parking spaces are proposed on the site plan and how many users of the office space there would typically be at a normal time.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't have the number, and I can't read this right now, but then...
Okay.
Do you know the number?
Can I just?
While we find the number of...
Time in quick?
Yeah.
We asked the same question at the pre-app meeting. I don't recall the exact number of spaces they're showing at the house, but they do have the manor right next door for overflow, so that solves the problem.
They're proposing six right now.
And what we, so 10 parking spaces is what's been calculated by our surveyor. We also don't work in office all days, so we're only one or two, yeah, basically, depending on who you're talking to and staff, it's one to three days in the office. So we're more of a flex work-from-home staff, so we're not always all in the office.
And that is also one of the reasons I asked to submit the driveway agreement, because there will be back and forth between the two sites.
Okay.
Okay. All righty. Dominic, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
And again, I know this hasn't actually been referred yet, but if you remember anything else, John, from the pre-application meeting?
No, it's a pretty straightforward application. I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay.
The one thing that I would add, Mr. Chairman, is that this project, you know, as the counsel for the applicant mentioned, you know, the environmental review for the overall trail is being evaluated at the state level. And so what's being considered here is simply the application that's before the board.
Right. And also picking up on your comment that this looks like it's a type-two action, I just took, we're not going to classify it tonight, but I think based on what I looked at, the type-two list, it looks like that's probably accurate. But we'll have our attorney and our engineering, planning consultants take a look at it and see if they agree. All right. At this point, I'd like to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments regarding this site development plan and special use permit proposal at 14 Corus Lane. So if there is anyone, please raise your hand. There'll most likely be a public hearing on this later, hopefully not too far later, but later in the process. That's the way the process works. So I don't see any hands up. So at this point, I'll ask if there's a motion to accept the application for the proposed site development plan and special use permit for staff offices located at 14 Corus Lane and to refer this application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Duchess Junction Fire Department, and the New York State Department of Transportation. Debbie, should this also be referred to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development?
Yes, absolutely, sure.
Okay, so we'll add that in there. So is there a motion? We'll all with that.
Okay. I'll make the motion very happily.
Okay. Fred makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
On my favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. So we will see you at our August 17th meeting, hopefully.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next two applications technically, because they are separated into two applications, is for the Healy Hyundai DKH Realty LLC, item six and seven on the agenda. We're going to cover those together so that we avoid duplication. And so I'll leave portions of the agenda descriptions for both items. And these are long ones, so I'm going to see if I can shorten them a little bit, see if I can get it done in less than, say, 20 minutes. No, I'm...
And go.
All right, so item number six is the amendment to site development plan for the Healy Hyundai DKH Realty LLC. Applicant seeks to amend the existing site development plan, which will include improvements to the existing residential driveway to make it wide enough for a common driveway for the two proposed lots off of Glanum Road. The number of inventory stalls in the rear of the building would be reduced or has been reduced to save the one existing house on Lot 4. No changes proposed for Lot 2. The existing house shall remain. Previously approved 5,200-square-foot service building is no longer proposed and will be eliminated from the plans. I won't talk about the underground stormwater chambers and grading utility revisions. You can talk about those if you like later. The existing 2,400-square-foot renovated garage next to Lot 2 will now serve as the service center. Importantly, the retaining wall has been raised to 15 feet in the rear of the property compared to the original approved 10-foot maximum height. Parking curb and island separating the Healy building from the renovated garage have been eliminated. Parking calculation has been updated based on the smaller existing garage. So that's about it for the description. I'm going to forego reading all of the existing parcel information, and this one would involve a referral of the application to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, the New York State Department of Transportation, the Roundout Fire District, and the Town Highway Superintendent. The application has already been referred to the town engineer and the town planning board attorney, and the planning board will allow informal comments from the public after discussion of both Healy applications. And then number seven on the agenda, the related application is for re-subdivision lot-line realignments. The applicant proposes to re-subdivide five parcels, combining portions of the parcels to create four lots, consisting of one 11.63-acre commercial lot to add an existing commercial building to that commercial lot, and three residential lots to accommodate existing residential structures. Again, I won't read all the parcel information that's in the agenda. The reconfigured lots will be Lot Number 1, consisting of 11.63 acres, Lot 2, consisting of 0.42 acres, Lot 3, consisting of .52 acres, and Lot 4, consisting of 0.46 acres. And this application also has already been referred to our planning board attorney and town engineer. And again, we'll combine the opportunity for comments from the public after we get through these applications. So the applicant has submitted the required application fees, and the existing escrow deposit has sufficient funds existing. So welcome, and thank you for submitting those applications. I just wanted to make a, for my own, opening remarks that this is really a complicated and serious matter. It includes among numerous other items, the retaining wall that was to be built on a maximum height of 10 feet high and approximately 565 feet in length, as shown and described on the site development plan approved by the planning board in May of 2022. During construction on the Healy site and without any notification to the planning board, a large portion of the retaining wall was built to a height of 15 feet, which is 50% higher than was approved by the planning board. Without getting into all the details, there was a series of communications between the town's building inspector and the applicant regarding the nonconforming retaining wall, and on March 31, 2023, the building inspector advised the town board that he had determined that the change in height of the law was a field change and that the construction of the retaining wall did not need to conform with the site development plan approved by the planning board. Subsequently, the town board filed an appeal with the town zoning board of appeals pursuant to Town Code, Section 150-179, challenging the building inspector's determination that construction of the retaining wall did not need to conform to the building specifications, terms, and conditions of the site plan approval adopted by the planning board because the nonconforming height of the retaining wall constituted a field change. This appeal is technically still pending before the zoning board of appeals. However, the letters from the DKH Realty LLC dated June 19, 2023, were sent to the zoning board of appeals and the planning board, received by the planning department actually on June 20, 23, which was the day of the scheduled zoning board meeting, stating that DKH Realty LLC intended to file an amended site plan with the planning board in the near future, and that amended site plan would reflect conditions resulted of work in the field. So the two applications now before the planning board constitute proposed amendments to the approved site development plan and re-subdivision of parcels owned by DKH Realty LLC. So with all that, as a preface, welcome. Again, thanks for being here, and if you could give us a fairly in-depth description of all of the proposed modifications, and it would really help, I think, because there are so many and so much detail, to show them as clearly as you can on the site plan on the screen when we get to that point. So I will turn... as you can on the site plan on the screen when we get to that point. So I will turn it over to you for now.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, for entertaining the applications tonight that are presented from Healy and the project that you know all so well. My name is Marsha Jacobowitz. I'm the attorney for the applicant, firm Jacobowitz and Associates. I think that, I'm hopeful that after the board hears of all of the amendments to the plan, and the reasons why the amendments were made, that you will agree that they are favorable, that they improved the site, and they improved the appearance. They added a lot to conformance of the already approved amended site plan. I am going to turn it over to the project architect, Ken, to go into more depth as to the changes that have been made.
My name is Ken Sigerson with Sigerson, so architects. That's why I bring everybody a little bit of a timeline as to what's occurred since we were here last, which was our site plan approval on September 9 of 2022. We applied for the building permit. We got it on November 14. We already had a hearing and grubbing permit, so a lot of the site work had been conducted in October and November. On November 30, the Heelys purchased the adjacent prep building, so that was not in the original plan. So once we realized, once we realized that, once they purchased the existing auto repair shop there, we determined that we did not need the 5,500 square foot prep building that was on the site. So we did not submit for a building permit for that. And then on January 20, the Heelys purchased 162 Glennam Road, and at that time determined that they would like to keep the residential nature of Old Glennam Road by keeping the originally proposed demolished house on there. So they actually did a level-one renovation of that house, fixed it up. Level-one is just, you know, painting, cleaning it up, things along those lines. So what they did with that purchase is they decided to keep the house, and in doing so, they reduced the upper parking lot by 16 spaces, since this could be part of that dwelling area. So, you know, a benefit is, you know, during our original site plan approval process, people on Old Glennam Road really wanted to keep the residential neighborhood feel, and we've actually been able to do that by keeping that house there. I think the foundation was from 1910, Dwight told me, the nice old stone foundation. So construction operations started on the site in mid-November. The retaining wall was a three-month process, and it finished around mid-January. Now, the reason the increase in height for the retaining wall is that it went from 10 feet to 15 feet. There are several factors to that. One of the items was, we wanted to have a balanced site. Whenever you do site design, you want to balance the site to limit the amount of export of materials off of the site. The site had a lot of rock. We actually calculated that we were able to, by increasing the wall height five feet, had multiple benefits. Benefit number one is the slope of the original upper parking lot was at such a degree that you would see four rows of cars if you were on the street side. You would see the rooftops of four cars. By reducing it, by raising the height of the wall five feet, when, you know, 60% of the wall is behind the building anyway. So by raising the wall five feet, you can see one row of cars. You can actually flatten out the top of the slope to five degrees, 5% grade. So item number one, we reduced the view shed of all the cars. Item number two, we actually were able to reduce the export of materials, 1,100 dump truck loads on Route 52. 20,000 cubic yards of stone were reclaimed and put on the site in the parking lot area. I mean, if you just do a little bit of math, that's a lot of carbon dioxide, you know, exhaust traffic on Route 52, an amazing amount. 1,100 trucks, going 50 miles, 25 miles each way minimum. That's the retaining wall. And now, what we see there today is, the building is, as you can see, it's well under construction. We're getting into the midpoint of the construction phase. The people from Hyundai were out here last Friday, and they actually gave the project, they said that this is probably the nicest Hyundai dealership in northeast and probably in the United States. So, I mean, big kudos that it's here in Tom Fishgo, right? Anyway, that's the timeline, from kind of where we were on September 9 with the site plan approval to today. And that's why we have a little bit taller wall, the more we propose. But like I said, when you drive on 52, if you're going northbound, you're past the building before you even see the retaining wall. If you're driving southbound, the building blocks the retaining wall. And what you do see of the retaining wall, it's not the 15-foot height that you see. You see maybe 7, 8, 10, 12 feet of wall, because the building, the way that it's positioned, 250 feet back from the property line, you don't even, you know, you barely notice the retaining wall. It's not right out on the property line. So I think it's a net win, view shed, export, you know, reduce the carbon footprint of the project, and balancing the site. I think that's it. Does that, if everybody could recap as to why we're here?
Let's see. If you could, I don't know if you can go to one of the more detailed plans to show where the originally proposed service building would have been, and where the, now the garage that's been renovated is located. There you go.
The service building was originally earmarked to be on the left-hand side for the sheet. The new building is on the existing building I renovated, it's on the right-hand side.
And where are the, I think you mentioned 16 parking spaces in the inventory lot?
And so on the right-hand side of the upper parking lot, there used to be 16 spots there, but with keeping that dwelling, we just removed all those spots.
How many spots did you pick up when you did build that building?
We didn't actually, if you look at that site where the building was, we didn't have parking. Where the building, you can see where it used to sit, there's no parking proposed, just to the left of the retaining wall.
This is probably going to be difficult to show, but can you show approximately on the retaining wall, the areas that ended up being, you know, upwards of 15 feet, and how it may have tapered down from there? I don't know if you have a pointer or anything you can show? I can sort of see that.
Yeah, it's from there. Pretty much the back of the retaining wall is at that line. It tapers off as the wall veers to the east, and as it turns north, it also tapers down. One of the, one of the things Ken mentioned, but I want to found on, is in doing so, we actually were able to grade that parking lot there closer to the town requirements for a parking lot. So we were able to reduce the slope from what was originally proposed. So, but right now, as you look at that, there's no fence there, there's no guardrail, but there's always been one proposed, and there's one proposed for the new, for this, once that old area is complete, that fence will be installed, perfectly. If you look at the profile, which...
So the fence on top or behind the retaining wall, I guess, is going to be six feet high, and it's supposed to be black?
Black.
Black vinyl.
Yeah, I think that was what was originally proposed and approved, I believe.
Yeah.
Or the board had asked to be modified to black vinyl.
Yeah.
You can do that there. I know. Yeah, it wasn't really working well. But if you, yeah, if you can see the, right there, the detail of the retaining wall, there's a, I'll call this fence, which isn't there now. So this, once that's installed, you won't even be able to see it from cars. The old plan...
All right. Well, we'll get to some more questions later, but why don't we ask John Bodendorf to go through CPL's memo dated July 12, 2023. And that has a lot of questions and information requested in there. So it'll take a few minutes to get through, I think.
Okay. I just want to make sure everyone received my updated memo dated July 12. I had issued one dated July 10, and realized after the fact that certain comments were not included. I think the wrong draft got PDFed and sent by accident. So the memo I'm reading from is the July 12, 2023 memo. We had a minor comment, well, not necessarily a minor comment on Seeker, just asking that the EAF be updated to include the entire action, the original site plan, amended aspects, et cetera. We asked for calculations for the installed retaining walls, since they are higher than what was originally approved. We asked for some notes to be placed on the plan, that all the utilities will be installed as originally approved. I think you went through a pretty decent summary or rationale of why you went with the 15-foot-high wall, but if you could just put that in a summary in the response to this. And then we did...
Hey, John, do you want to jump back to the Seeker issue?
Sure.
I'm just, we're trying not to cloud it. We're wondering, the project action in front of the board right now is an amended site plan, which I believe EAF, which we submitted, addresses. It's just I don't know what you want me to do embellishing to, I don't know why you want to bring the old action into it.
Okay, we can have a conversation offline. I'll bring one of our Seeker people into the mix. Is, is what I'm looking at on that plan, is that a section through the site with the new wall as installed?
It's 15-foot, yes.
It is? Okay. So that was something I must have missed, so we'll ignore comment number five under general, because that was something I thought would be helpful for the board to look at versus what was approved. It will show, as they explain, that the slope up in that parking area is flatter, and that you most likely will see less cars because of the height difference. So I think that's something you all should take a look at when you're considering this. We did ask that you provide some kind of narrative as to what the ramifications would be if you had to bring this back down to a 10-foot wall. Asked for some additional details on the residential driveway, providing notes that there will be no connectivity between that driveway and the commercial part of the property. You indicated the number of parking stalls that were eliminated. If you could just make it a little more clear on the plan where they were?
Okay.
You know, just so that the board has a better understanding of, you know, where the lesser impacts are now in terms of parking.
Okay.
Asked for elevations and photos of the renovated garage, include material types, colors, that kind of stuff.
You're talking about the building to the west?
Yes.
Sorry, the east, excuse me.
Yeah.
Even though that wasn't part of this application. That was done under a building permit.
Okay. Well, if you could just provide...
We do, if we have, I just...
Yeah, well, it's now part of the amended site plan proposal.
But the building is complete. It's been constructed.
Yeah, so is the wall.
Yeah, we'll give it to you. We'll, I mean, we'll just...
And if there are any changes to the landscaping plans as a result of these site amendments, just please indicate what those are, if there aren't any changes. Make that clear. And then there's just some housekeeping items, updating the zoning data table. There's a couple accessory structures. It's not clear what's happening with those, so just clear that up on the plans. And that's essentially it.
Thank you, John. Any, any other questions or comments from planning board members?
I'm a little confused.
All right. Ask some questions.
Okay. You're keeping the old Brownell garage, correct?
No, no. The, I'm sorry, which garage are you guys?
The original building that was on the site.
The Royal Carpet?
You're, okay, you know Royal Carpet, correct?
It's coming down.
Okay, that one's coming down. So it's the garage that you're keeping is the one on the other side of that that you bought?
Yeah, and it used to be a Saab. I think it was a Saab.
Pete's garage. Yeah, it was a Saab, but it was just, whatever. Okay, but, okay, so you bought that one?
Yes.
And that is going to take the place of the big garage that you're not fixing, not building?
Correct, right.
All right. And then you kept that little, you kept the old stone house. You bought the old stone house on the west side?
Yep, yes.
And that one, you, when you, you're going to take parking that used to be close to that and eliminate that?
Correct. We also proposed to burn around the back of that, which was part of the original plan, but we just relocated and burned it to the floor.
Okay. And what about the house just west of that stone house? Is that still staying there?
Yes.
Don't ask me that number. I don't know the number. But you're keeping that house too, and you're keeping the old Brownell house, the big white house?
Yes, yes.
And those are the three houses you're keeping, nothing else? And you're keeping the barn with the old, you're still keeping the barn with the Brownell house?
Should be a different property. I think the barn's across the street, is that?
No.
No? So the house that was there now is, there was a garage there, it was in very bad shape, and that, that was supposed to be removed in the original, and we're going to also remove it again as part of this plan, as you said.
You show us where that is on the map, something? I mean, I...
Which one do you want? We need the right-hand side. If you could show us the right-hand side. Yeah, you can.
This one here?
To the right.
Here?
Yeah.
The big white house, two-story, two-and-a-half-story house.
All right. So the red barns and the white Victorian house that you're speaking of is down here on the left-hand side. It's totally separate property, that property right there.
Some house, is it?
Yes. We're, that is not our property. We're talking about...
Okay, so you did not purchase that property?
We did not purchase that one. Everything that we have purchased is on the other side, which, the right-hand side of the parking area, the top of the page.
Okay.
Okay? Which are essentially behind the visible blue house in Hometown Deli, which is on the knoll on the old climate side.
Okay. Okay. So, you did not purchase that, okay. And then, you're eliminating the garage, and you're not putting any additional parking in that spot where you eliminated it. So, it's just going to be a flat piece of property there. Okay, I think maybe I caught up. Anybody else? Oh, sorry, guys.
Any other? Oh, yeah, this better. Thanks. Would you like to take over his chair for a while? Anthony, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, I think the explanations given tonight for the major changes were actually well-done, and for me, the question remains as to why we're here in July, talking about changes, some of which have been completed months ago. Why were these not brought back to the board? I think if this board had been approached prior to some of these changes taking place, that it may have been much better received. Makes me very skeptical personally, as I'm sure it makes members of the public very skeptical as to whether or not there are other changes that have taken place on this site between the current approval and the current plan. And I'd like to see our planning board engineer conduct a site visit to compare the previously approved plans to the currently proposed plans, and make sure that we're fully capturing all the changes that are being proposed, because I'm not convinced that we have them all. So, I'd like our engineer to verify that.
Is that something you would be able to do, John?
Yeah.
Okay, and hopefully, report back to the board for the August meeting when we'll...
Yeah, not a problem.
...we'll be continuing the review.
I just want to make a kind of statement in general to, I would say it would apply to all applicants, but now that you guys are here with this, and I think Anthony touched upon it a little bit, is that one of the things that is a frustration for us as planning board members, and I don't speak for the other members, but is that to get from beginning to site approval is a whole process, and it takes a lot of work from a lot of people, not just us, not just our consultants, but the applicants, the applicant's team, and all the agencies and people that are involved. And then, when we finally get there, we get to a place where we feel that we've gotten a good project, the applicant's happy, the town is going to have a benefit to it, and then these changes that happen, we, listen, I know changes are going to happen, I know it's not going to be perfect, but it doesn't happen overnight. And when they're happening, I would appreciate if the applicant would consider coming back to us and saying, "Well, you know, these things, we've realized that what we have on paper right now is not what we're going to do. We're going to make changes to it, and the building department should be notified, and I think we should be notified." And I think the public would have a lot more faith in the process if that's the way we go about it. And again, this is a general thing for all applicants, because, you know, you work so hard to get to this place, and then, I mean, this is not just one change, there are a lot of changes here. As far as the wall, I know a lot of people are bothered by the wall. It doesn't bother me at all. I can't even see the wall, building's in front of it. I, for full disclosure, I went to the site myself, I went with actually Ron Davis, the zoning board chair. We got a chance to speak to a couple of people that were there, and we went up to the top there. I felt that action is better there now. It's a lot more level than it would have been, I think, so I think it's safer. But these are things that I think should come back to us. Instead of waiting months and months and months, and then, after it's completed and you've come up with basically almost like a whole new plan, then you come back to us. So, it's something that I would ask applicants to please have that in your mind when you're going through these changes, and even though you may, and you're thinking, "These are good changes, and maybe the town's going to like these," well, let us at least know what you're doing, because I think, you know, you come back, like Anthony said, once later, and it makes everybody think, "Well, why didn't they come in front of us right away?" And I know they're constraints, because when you start constructing things, you don't want to have a three, four, five, six-month delay on something, but I think we should be notified on especially major changes like this.
If I could, please, I'd like to just acknowledge the comments that were made by board member Rozier and Lopez, and just for the board's information, I mean, there's a kind of an undertone of subterfuge and avoidance, and that's not the case at all. I happen to know the applicant extremely well. They build projects, build buildings that are an enhancement to every community that they're in. Nothing was done to undermine the authority of this board. Things in the field happen, and you try to keep the project going because you have time constraints, financial constraints. None of the changes that have been made or are contemplated to be made are, or have been done or will be done without informing the board, and that was not the intent, and I would, it would be unfortunate for this board to have that thought in your minds, because it's so far from what happened in reality and what was needed to be done at the time that some of these changes were made. Now, I also want to just add, the applicant at no time tried to circumvent this board. They went through the proper channels, they notified the building inspector of a change in regard to the wall. Building inspector came out, inspected, and said, "I understand what you're doing, this is a field change." These are words used by the town's building inspector. The applicant never thought that the building inspector didn't have the authority to make that inspection, nor that determination. The applicant moved forward based on the building's inspector's evaluation of the situation and determination. And then, when it was countered by the town board, and we all know the course that it's taken, the applicant stated, "We have every intention of going to the planning board because there's some other changes that we want to bring to the attention of the board." I think that I'm hopeful that the explanation with regard to the retaining wall and what's been done will meet to the satisfaction of the board, and if certainly any other information is required or wanted by any board member, we are, you know, welcoming any questions and will provide whatever information this board would like. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. Felix, I agree entirely with what you were saying, Felix, and, but I also wanted to say, it's, we shouldn't put it all on the applicant, on the Heelys. There are definitely, in my mind, some issues with our building department and how things are handled in the building department. And I think the town board, I won't speak for the town board, but I think that some of the town board members probably are feeling the same thing that I'm thinking, that there probably needs to be some more very specific wording in our town code addressing these types of situations where what is a field change? What is a minor field change? Does the building inspector have the authority to make field changes? There's nothing in the town code that says that they do. And as Felix was saying, it makes it very frustrating for the planning board members, myself, I can speak for myself, and Felix has said the same thing, when these types of determinations are made. And also, in that whole process where the town board got involved and filed an appeal with the zoning board of appeals, I learned, because I didn't know previously, that the planning board also has that same authority to challenge a determination by the building inspector, and I'm sure we will be using that authority at some point in the future if things like this continue, because it's just not a good situation. And so, it's, you know, in my mind, it's both things that happen, not entirely the applicant's fault, not entirely the building department's fault, but a combination of the two really ended up with some serious problems, in my mind. So, yes, if you'd like to continue?
I just want to thank the chair for the recognition of that situation, and I would just like to add, I do hope that the Heelys aren't caught in the middle of the situation between the building department and the town board and the planning board, because that would be unfortunate. I don't see a reason for that to happen, so I'm hopeful that that won't be the case.
Well, I personally appreciate the town board as a whole for taking the action that they did, because if that hadn't happened, I don't know for sure whether this, these applications would be back before the planning board. And it's a shame, because that's the process that always used to happen. Anytime there was any kind of a site issue or a modification determined to be present during construction that was not part of the approved site plan, would typically just automatically come back for a site plan amendment to the planning board, and it's really a shame that that hasn't been the process of recent years. So, I'm not, anyone else? Yeah, if you want to go, Felix.
One thing to just, I just want to make sure that you all understand, we've dealt with the Heelys before, and they've always done an amazing job. So, I have no problem with the Heely company, with Dwight and any of the people in Heely. They've done a great job, and when I was on-site, I was very impressed with the workmanship. It's really, we're talking high level, and they're doing everything, not just, they're going above board to make sure they have a great place. So, I'm very happy with that. I'm just, like I said, the frustration comes when almost you feel like we get kind of left out after going through the whole process together. And we want you to understand, it's a coordinated effort, it's a collaboration, and we want to be part of that if it gets to the point where you realize, "Hey, you know, this is not working, we need to make some changes." And this board is not here to stop things, but we're here to try to make it so that it's the best for the applicant and for the town, and that's what we're trying to do. And I mean, at least that's where I'm coming from. So, I just wanted to make sure you understood that, too. Thank you.
And I think there's another end to it, too, which we'll need to talk about moving ahead into the future, and that's better coordination between the building department and our planning board engineering office in terms of site inspections when they're needed, what they should entail, especially when and if a modification is discovered by the building inspector, that the planning board engineer would have a lot of familiarity with having gone through the whole site plan approval process. And, you know, I know we're going to need to talk more, John, about CPL's role in doing engineering site inspections during construction process, and again, that may be something that the code itself needs some clarification and revisions about, but I think just by practice, we need to make sure that we're getting the instructions that we need to make sure that the town's interests are protected.
Yeah, you know, the project itself, I mean, I've always been for, because it's cleaned up a nice or of a piece of property and properties around it. I see the, I've been on a lot of construction projects, and I understand when you get lemons, you guys try to make lemonade out of it by figuring out that if there's a lot of rock there to take out and haul out, it's money, it's lots of money. The biggest thing, I think, is, like they're saying here, is that the visual thing is that, oh, they just did what they wanted without really coming back, but it's not, I know it's not that, and I know that, you know, the building inspector made a site visit, and, you know, I guess no one's trying to push anybody under a bus, but basically, when you raise up the height elevation, then everything is up higher. And I went on the job site, I went up, I rode up on top of there, and I could see that it's more level and everything else, but there's a lot of things to consider. You think that you raise up the property, your lighting is going to be higher if you're going on that grade of that property. So, there is a lot of stuff to really that, like they said here, that should be presented to us so that we could just make an educated response, and it's not like thinking anybody tried to, you're right across the street, you know? So, that's my thought on it.
No comments.
Robbie, anything?
Nothing for that.
All right, well, we can go back around if anyone has any more comments later, but, yeah, I mean, we've already covered some of this, but, you know, there are a number of items listed in CPL's memo that we're going to need to see before the board can really move forward with any determinations on the site plan amendments. So, we'll be looking forward to seeing those. You know, if possible, it would be nice to keep this moving along and get them in in time for the submission date for the August 17th meeting. I don't know what Debbie, what's the submission date?
Six, thank you.
One question I had, and some others may have in mind, there do appear to be cars parked up above in the inventory parking area. So, just some questions, what's the purpose of those cars that are being stored there? Are any of them actually used or new car inventory that are up there? And if so, what kind of permission has been obtained, if any, from the town to do that?
If I may, when the deliveries come, existing, in the existing Brownell facility, the old facility, Heelys is operating there in terms of prep department, so the new cars come in and they have to go through a series of inspections and recordings. So, the truck drops off there, they do that, they record them, and then, they ultimately make their way down to the existing Hyundai store lower on 52. So, there is nothing that's on our site. Originally, they were kept lower, but with space constraints, with the parking lot to the level that it was, they were moved there for just temporary storage at that point in time. The employees grab and take down to the store for sale, just a space, a space presentation, really, nothing intended to be anything more than having us be able to keep working around the site.
So, did you obtain any kind of temporary certificate of occupancy from the town building department to do that?
No, sir.
Have you approached the building department, asking them if that would be a permitted thing to do?
No, only because existing, the existing building that was not demolished yet was still in use. We hadn't, we haven't gone for the demolishing of that building, so it was just a positioning on the land, per se, that we moved, and we could move them back down if we needed to tomorrow morning and/or contact the building department and have a temporary inspection on the parking lot for record if that's what's needed.
Yeah, I don't know, per se, what would be needed, but I think it probably would be appropriate to contact the building department and find out if, you know, if they're okay with what's happening there.
Sure.
And, you know, it is a construction site, so I mean, is that the best place to store newer, or, you know, nicely-used vehicles? I mean, that's your judgment, but if it were me, I don't know that I would do that.
It was assumed that up in that area was the best, instead of having the work around the new cars down, whether it's someone just, you know, walking to the restroom, if you will, and with a tool belt on, and risking a scratch on it. So, we can take care of it tomorrow morning, first thing with the building department.
So, please do that and report back to us at the August meeting, if you could.
Sure. Sure.
Let's see. Well, I think what Anthony was saying before, I'm putting it into slightly different words, but can you assure the planning board that the main Heely building, as a good example, because that's the one, the big one that's under construction, will conform to the size, location, shape, footprint, and architectural details that were shown on the approved site development plan and other materials that were submitted to the planning board? So...
Yes.
Yes.
We're not allowed to actually deviate at all from the Hyundai specs, which is what was submitted during the segment of the process. So, they actually laser scanned from the building, so it's to the millimeter?
Okay. And then finally, from my point of view, for the record, are there any other modifications from the approved site development plans that have already been built or contemplated to be built that you have not informed the planning board about yet?
There are none at this time that are known.
Kind of contradicting that. So, we did take some liberty and added more landscaping on that burn than what was proposed originally. We added more blue spruce, white spruce, white pines for the protection of that visual look from Old Glutton Road. And also to protect the neighbor, which Mr. Cantor referenced, the red barns and the white house, working with that neighbor there. So, we will reflect those on the plan, that was a landscaping change. Now, there are, there are a few items that I don't want to say that we're not, we presented everything with Mark Day's office on this plan, but certain things like the vaults for the transformers, we're kind of bound by what Central Hudson decides to tell us where they want them per se, which were part of the relocation, which is on this submission, which is on the backside of the wall that you may see when you drive down. We don't really have control of where they, where we want to position it, basically. So, things of that nature change, and we can advise, but not any intentional changes thus far.
I think you did mention that one in the application.
We did, only because of what had happened, we wanted to try and make it complete. But again, that was nothing that we did intentionally, it was other factors that drove, in fact, that other utility companies tell us.
Right.
Similar to, you know, adding a fire hydrant based on the Glutton Fire Department's request in front of the building since the first, the closest one is actually here in the town's property. So, things of that nature, we did to satisfy other municipal sources.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, we are going to open this up for informal public comments in a minute, but I wanted to just go around the board another time to see if there are any more questions or thoughts, and also to see if, Dominic, if you have any thoughts about the process that we should know about at this point.
For any public comment? You want thoughts now?
Either, you could wait if you want, we could go ahead with the public comments.
Yeah, I mean, the board did a very thorough review of the initial application in connection with this project, and what's in front of you now is an amendment to those plans. So, you know, certainly the board would be comparing the effect of the amendments as it relates to the prior approvals and the board's prior negative declaration for this project. You're not looking at it, in my opinion, you know, as if no project existed at all, but you're evaluating the overall effect of the changes compared to what was approved.
All right, thanks. So, let's see if there is anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments regarding the proposed amendments to the Heely Hyundai site development plan or the proposed re-subdivision. So we see one standing there. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll have four minutes to speak, and we'll give you a heads up when there's one minute left.
Sure. Ann LaGoy, I live at 15 Wellsley Place in Fishkill. I just, you know, you all have been very gracious and kind with your comments and suggestions and concerns. Just coming from, you know, another perspective, it felt a little bit disingenuous, you know, that the corporate heads came down from Hyundai, and this is the best thing, and it's great, you know, and that the efforts are made, and neighbors, you know, generally tend to like this particular business's projects. So, there are several projects, as we know, around the region, and I will say this, I had a very dear friend, rest in peace, who lived close by another project from this same company, and, you know, it was, you know, giving a plan, and then it changed, and then it's like ask for forgiveness later. So, it is a little bit disturbing to see this mammoth building with a huge wall, and things change, I mean, is this the engineer's responsibility? Like, wouldn't they know something like this prior to going into the project? So, it feels a little bit hollow, you know, it's built, it's huge, and not all the neighbors really do love this project. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this matter? I don't see anybody. All right. So, well, let's see if there's a motion to accept the applications. This would be for the proposed amendments to the Heely Hyundai DKH Realty Site Development Plan and the proposed re-subdivision, lot line realignments discussed tonight, and to refer these applications to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, the New York State Department of Transportation, the Rambout Fire District, and the Town Highway Superintendent. And before we get a motion, I'll just mention, it is quite possible that when we do this referral to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, they may consider the applications incomplete, they oftentimes do. So if we refer the materials now, we may get a letter back from them saying incomplete, please resubmit when, you know, appropriate material is assembled. So just with that in mind, I'll still ask for the motion for acceptance and referral.
Mr. Chair, before the motion, is it Glenham Fire or Rambout? Because they said that Glenham told them to put them.
It should be Glenham.
It's Glenham.
Well, you put it in as.
Well, I, you listen, you have me tied too many words.
So that'll be the Glenham Fire District. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Pay attention.
Well, would you like to move it now that we could?
I move it.
Fred moves it.
I'll second.
Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so we, so there'll be a lot of materials to submit that CPL went over in the memo, and we look forward to continuing the discussion at the August 17th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We're fully prepared to address the comments that the planning board engineer has put in his comment letter, and we should have those back within a couple days.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thanks all for coming in. Actually, I did have one more thought before we go on to the next item. This is just a suggestion for the board, really, but I don't think the planning board can retire, require the town building inspector, Mr. Petrus, to appear before the planning board, but I would like to invite Joel to attend the August 17th meeting, just to explain from his perspective what happened regarding the retaining wall situation and any other things that may have been discovered on the site during construction, and why he didn't send it back to the planning board for consideration of an amended site development plan much sooner in the construction process. Think it would have saved us all a lot of time and trouble, and would have definitely been consistent with past practice, and consistent with the town code provisions and the planning board's adopted resolution of approval. So Joel, if you're listening, you are welcome to come and talk to us. All right. Okay. All right, we get to the actual project reviews now. How's that? It's not even nine o'clock yet. I thought I was being sarcastic. All right, let's move along here. So, the first project. Well, I think we're going to keep going.
Okay.
If you're, okay. Yeah, I know, I think we're just going to have to keep going.
Okay.
So, the next item is Continental Commons Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit for to review the draft burial area conservation easement submitted by the applicant's representative on May 24th, 2023. And also just welcome, but a note that the applicant indicated they were not ready to submit the plan for the removal of felled trees from the Continental Commons site that we did discuss at the June meeting. We do hope that that plan will be ready to submit for the board, to the board for the August 17th meeting, so that the trees can be removed from the site as soon as possible in a safe and ecologically sound way. So that was just an aside there. So, our attorney, Dominic Cordisco, was asked to review the proposed burial conservation easement submitted by Continental Commons as required by the planning board's resolution of preliminary site development plan approval. Mr. Cordisco submitted a memo to the planning board dated June 27th, 2023, with his observations and recommendations on the conservation easement. So Dominic, why don't you go ahead and highlight your memo for the board, please?
Sure. In the interest of time, the project has previously received a conditional preliminary approval. And as part of the conditions, there was a requirement that a easement, conservation easement be entered into in connection with the burial area. And that has been, a draft of that has been prepared, it has been submitted to us for our review. It is an agreement essentially between the landowner and such applicant, as well as the Fishkill Historical Society. The town of Fishkill is not a party to the agreement, but the fact is that the agreement itself was a condition of the approval. So, in that context, it's before you for consideration and recommendations as to anything that might be adjusted. I would say overall that the document itself is very clear regarding restricted activities meant to preserve the burial area on site, and so I do not have any particular recommendations in connection with the restrictions that would be placed. And once these restrictions are agreed to between the historical society and the applicant, and once those, the conservation easement would be recorded with the county clerk's office, these would be restrictions that would be carried forward in perpetuity. So, there is some question as to when the timing of the conservation easement should occur. I have a recommendation that it should occur prior to the release of the signed site development plan, rather than upon issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for the project. If you push it out to the certificate of occupancy, at that point, you know, the project will be under construction, or even construction could be complete, and there'll be a lot of interest from the applicant and others to actually issue that certificate of occupancy, and it would be better to finalize the terms of this conservation easement now. And the fact is, is that the project has preliminary approval and doesn't have conditional final approval yet, so it seems like the time would be right to do so. And so I'm sure that Mr. Cooper will provide an update to the board, but I believe that the current draft of the conservation easement should be provided to the historical society for their review. I also have some other recommendations there. One of the recommendations is, and this is just an option, but the town board may wish to consider being a party to the conservation easement, so that the town could also enforce its terms in the future, if it so wishes. I don't think that that would be a planning board decision, it would be up to the town as to whether or not to be a party to that agreement, and it is merely a suggestion on my part. And the conservation easement, as it's currently written, it provides the ability for the applicant owner to conduct future archaeological studies. However, the historical society or the town board may wish to conduct their own studies in the future. So I would believe that one recommendation could be to broaden that ability, because there might be future technological advances. Bear in mind that conservation easement like this, it's hard to get your mind around it, but it's actually supposed to last forever. So, forever is a very, very long time. Who knows what kind of investigation techniques may exist 200 years from now, but broadening that right so that it's not just the applicant, but perhaps the historical society may wish to be able to conduct investigations as well. So, that's really my recommendations to hopefully make this an even better document. It's already a very comprehensive document that's been proposed by the applicant that I believe is fully intended to meet the condition associated with the preliminary approval.
So, do you have some feedback to provide?
Yes, Mr. Chair. If you'll allow me. Good to see everybody again. For the record, David Cooper, partner with the law firm of Zarin and Steinmetz, we have been retained by the applicant to bring this to final site plan approval, so kind of the closer, if you may. We are getting up to speed, a couple of items which I will get to, let me go first to the restrictive covenant. A couple of items. One, with respect to the suggestion of the timing of the recording. So the issue really is, when does this document get recorded into land records? And as Dominic says, forever is enforceable and encumber, encumbers the property. The issue with holding off until, well, sorry, holding the site plan approval until it's recorded is it's putting the cart before the horse respectfully, because they can't encumber the property until they know that they have all of their entitlements in hand. So what I would propose is, rather than at the, rather than at the CFO, to do it before the building permit is issued. So in other words, as a condition of the building permit, before the building permit be issued, that the easement be recorded. That way, the concern about the building going up is still addressed, can't go up until the building permit's in hand, and also the applicant's concern of, look, I need to know that I've got the entitlements in hand, is also addressed. I hope that's a happy medium that the board could incorporate into the recommendation.
So, let me ask a question to Dominic, because I think you actually did mention two, it sort of sounded like two different possibilities, one of which was prior to issuance of the building permit, I think you ended up saying. So, does that sound like something that would?
Certainly. I mean, that would, you know, prevent the project from starting construction without having these terms finalized, and I think it's a reasonable middle ground to approve.
So instead of saying, prior to release of the signed development plan, it would be prior to issuance of any building permit?
Correct. And that, you know, just to be clear, this project has preliminary approval, but they haven't yet made an application for conditional final. At any point where the board feels that the project's ready for conditional final, this would be, in my opinion, would be a condition that would be contained in that final. final approval resolution and could be clarified at that time.
And hold that thought, because I've got questions about all of the other easements and documents that, that we need feedback on, because I think that might be a reasonable answer for all of them, but hold that thought.
This is the only one we're talking about tonight.
Yes.
It'll take how many more meetings to discuss the other?
Well, I've got a plan for that.
Which you can also discuss another time. Because we've got a lot of stuff.
There are only, only two other, two other comments on the restrictive covenant.
Sure.
So, with respect to adding the town as additional party, I note, the town already had, will have enforcement authority over the burial area just by virtue of its land use approval authority, right? Because the uses that are programmed for that area, in other words, the, the lack of use, right, you can't use that for anything, is part of your approval. So, if it's, if something occurs there that is, that is inconsistent with, and I sound a lot like what just happened before, right, is inconsistent with the approved use, the town already has the ability to bring enforcement action. And so, by adding the town as an additional party, it's not necessary. Also, I would note that the condition that this board issued for preliminary approval left it to the option of the applicant, either the historical society or the town. We have, we have engaged with the historical society and they are, they are amenable to taking on that, that enforcement authority and have already given us back comments on the easement. And in fact, we're, we're very close. We're anticipating comments back from the, from council soon. So, we would object to that additional condition being added on to, I guess, the final approval because it's inconsistent with your preliminary. And then finally, with respect to allowing others to come on and, and dig, so the, the easement itself does contemplate and allows inspector, you know, surveys, historical surveys and inspection of that area and studies of that area, but it's, it's at the owner's notice and, and they need the ability to control when, how, and if it occurs. Remember, you know, this is going to be a commercial site, right, open to the public, there's going to be restaurants, other, other public amenities. People are going to be coming in and, and onto that site. They can't have an open dig site, you know, near that area where someone might just access. So, they do need that control over the ability to say when and how and if study is going to occur. Because the, because the restriction already contemplates it, and just, you know, I say that with just the note of, we're not saying they can't occur, we're just saying you got to allow the property owner to control when, when that happens.
Well, maybe the when and how, but I'm not sure about the if part of it. I, I don't think I would go along with that.
Well, I'm not sure what the, what the, what the planning board would be proposing with respect to scope of studies. I mean, the, and look, it sounds, it sounds wonderful, but you got to remember, you're, you're inviting people into a, a site that's got to be, you know, sensitively protected and also if there are open pits, et cetera, that's a liability that you're putting on to the property. So, I'm not sure that a restrictive covenant is, is the right venue or mechanism for achieving what the suggestion is, you know, that the suggestion is to allow the town and, and the FHA to just have the ability to come on and study. I also don't know if there are any other historical sites in the town where the, where the town has said, we want that authority. And so, it's just, it's, it's not as, it's not as easy as just saying, we just want the ability to, to dig there. You got to think about the liability on the property owner's side.
Well, yeah, but I don't think research and investigation necessarily means digging either. So, that's maybe an extreme comment you're making. I think there are a lot of other tools available and as, as Dominic mentioned, who knows what kinds of technology might be available. And I think you mentioned two hundred years, but what about five or ten years? The way things change now, you know, things evolve very rapidly. So, I, I don't think I would go along with just accepting the rationale with the extremes that you've indicated, because I think there are ways of dealing with the, the when and the how of research and investigation and still be able to protect the, you know, the owner's, developer's interest in the property. So, I think we need to think about that some more.
And the public. I mean, and Mr. Chairman, just push back a little bit because I don't know what you mean by extreme. How else do you?
Well, extreme, I'm picking on your wording of digging, which is an extreme and not necessarily the only type of research and investigation that could happen.
Maybe, maybe I'm, again, I'm coming up to speed on it. So, is there, is there other study that, that was contemplated or was discussed or is the?
I don't know. There's nothing been discussed. I think we're simply trying to give everyone feedback into what, this is my own impression and I would love to go around and get other planning board members' ideas, but I, I actually appreciate Dominic's memo and recommendations entirely, for that matter. I'm not so sure either why the applicant would be, or, or the historical society would be opposed to approaching the town, official town board, asking whether they would like to somehow be a participant in this.
I mean, you could see a scenario where there could possibly be even disinterment in future because of the advances in DNA technology that would perhaps, you know, look at the ability to trace back ancestors and all of that. I mean, Twenty-three and Me and all of those things. I have an uncle who found out he had a son they didn't know about, but that's a whole nother story.
I don't know how I'm going to draft that into the agreement, but, but those, that type of investigation isn't invasive, right? All, to me, it's, once you start disturbing the land, right, people can walk on it, break a leg, et cetera. And I know I'm being, being the attorney, but that's what I'm being paid for, right? That opens up a whole other li, piece of liability. And so, I don't think we could just say, look, technology at some point may get better. I'm not sure what that, what that means and I, I don't know how you, how you draft for that. All I'm saying is, look, rather than, rather than saying this party has an affirmative right to come on to the property whenever it wants, however it wants to study, is to say, let the applicant, the owner, the property owner, whoever that's going to be fifty years from now, have the ability to say when and how so that we don't run into this issue.
But not if. That's kind of my core point. And I think we need to discuss and figure it out more. But I think, I think your position is one side and our position is a different side and we need to see how they can come together. Isn't that what attorneys do?
If you let me, yes.
No, we don't, we don't want to let you simply represent the applicant's position because we know that's what you're going to do.
Isn't the applicant still responsible for maintaining it? This property? Even though it's an easement with? All right? Am I correct?
Are you asking me?
Or attorney?
You're looking at me.
I'm looking at our attorney.
You're looking at me.
Who's responsible for maintaining the property?
Well, the property is owned and will remain owned by the applicant.
Well, we mean, so he's.
And, and so, and the, and the conservation easement prevents that area from being built upon or otherwise disturbed.
Except for, for walkway or whatever. Who's going to maintain the walkway?
The applicant.
The applicant is.
Correct.
And so, the easement, the conservatory easement is giving the historical society the right to?
Correct. And, and make sure that the easement itself is being obeyed.
And, and hold, and hold events, et cetera, programming, et cetera. I mean, the, the crux of the restriction is, don't disturb. I mean, what, what I would suggest is if you allow Dominic and I to, to work through this, this issue, I don't think regardless of what the chairman and I sound like, I don't think we're actually that far off and so we can, we can reach a middle ground on that one.
What is the feedback you've gotten from this historical society?
They've, they've agreed to, basically what you've seen is what they've agreed to. There are a couple of tweaks to addresses and one or two terms in terms of notice, but with respect to the overall obligations, the use and enforceability, they're basically on board.
Oh, I have a question for you that, this might be relatively simple, but this is in the actual wording of the easement itself on page three. And I think it's repeated elsewhere in the document, but it's three B, there shall be no temporary or permanent buildings constructed or placed on the burial area. My thought is to add the word or structures after buildings. So, there shall be no temporary or permanent buildings or structures constructed or placed. And I think the key is especially permanent, but it, it actually does mention temporary as well.
As long as that, that doesn't prevent, someone had said trails or whatever, whatever may be on there is sort of passive, I, I don't think that, that's an issue. The, the idea is you're not going to be disturbing this area, but.
So, Dominic, do you have any thoughts on adding the word structures in there?
You know, I, I do not. I don't have any objection to it. I think, you know, the, one of the issues is that this was a condition of preliminary approval. It has to be finalized and there's additional time to finalize it, but it also has moving parts because it involves the historical society as well. So, I think overall the desire was to make sure that that area is preserved and that the historical society has a say in making sure that that area is preserved. And beyond that, you know, the board has diminishing interest in exactly how that's accomplished, especially if the historical society is satisfied with the document.
So, anyway, that, I would just suggest that maybe you broach that with the historical society and see if they are okay with adding the words or structures in there.
Mr. Chair, what if they want to put up a sign? Is that a structure? The historical society?
I think that's already covered in, elsewhere in the easement language somewhere.
Yes. And a sign is a structure.
You could, you could say, structures other than permitted hereunder or something, you know, so that if it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, yeah, page four, letter I is no sign shall be placed on the burial area, et cetera. So, that's covered. With certain exceptions. You got to look through the documents.
I did, I did a long time ago.
Yeah, sure.
So, speaking of, speaking of documents, there are seven other easements that were submitted to the, to the town in December of two thousand and twenty-two that we still haven't gotten comments back on. Now, I'm, I'm new to the game. I did reach out to, to, to council to see if we can get some comments. I, I don't know, I don't know what the status is, but what I would, what I would ask is if we're going to say ultimately that this easement is going to be a condition of final approval, then also move all of the other easement approvals to final approval. Because here's the issue. You've issued preliminary site plan approval. The applicant has submitted everything that it needs to under the conditions, they just haven't gotten signed off yet. We're kind of in limbo and, you know, it's not fair because there's a, there's a deadline ticking, right, it was just extended, but we want to submit the final sub, site plan application to you, but we don't want to get a, a note back saying it's not complete because where are the signed off easements?
Yeah. I, I can address that, Mr. Chairman. So, back in December, there was a submission, a comprehensive package of various different documents. And the board at that time authorized a consultants' meeting for the review of those documents. And that took place on Tuesday, January thirty-first, at La Bella's office with the applicant's then-existing counsel. And we did provide comments at that time in connection with some suggestions regarding those documents. There are also certain additional documents in association with this project that are before the town council, Mr. Gaba, because some of them require review and approval by the town board. For instance, the stormwater maintenance facilities agreement requires town board approval. It's been forwarded to Mr. Gaba and I believe Mr. Cooper has also been in touch with Mr. Gaba in connection with his response.
I've tried. I've reached out.
Understood.
The issue, the issue is, is we can't, we can't, if the board is going to say we can't entertain a final.
I wasn't finished though. So, so on, on that point, I do agree with Mr. Cooper that these conditions, I think it was helpful that I laid them out in a preliminary approval resolution, but they also typically would be conditions of any final approval resolution as well. So, to the extent that anything remains open between the time of preliminary approval and the applicant requesting conditional final, then my suggestion would be to carry those forward as far as conditional final. There's procedure that the board has to undertake in connection with any request for conditional final approval for this project. My suggestion would be if, and the board may want to make this suggestion to the applicant as well, is, is that they should make a submission to the board, providing an update regarding the project and making a specific request to be placed on an agenda for consideration of potential conditional final approval. And then the board can take a look at the project holistically at that time, see what's outstanding, see what makes sense to be held as a condition of final approval or what else may need to be resolved at this time. Right now, we're, you know, providing, I think, important feedback on a very narrow aspect of this project, but it should be seen, I think, in a longer context, or broader context, rather.
That sounds like a logical approach.
And, and you get to see less of me, that's. Maybe, I'm sorry, I should say.
All right, well, we do need to get on to some other business items. So, I don't, you know, I don't know that we were intending to say, okay, this easement here in front of us is okay to move ahead with, but we've discussed it and you have Dominic's recommendations. I don't know if there's any more feedback from board members, but we, we should do it quickly if you have anything.
No, I just think the, I, I know the applicant's attorney has asked if he could speak with our attorney. Do, do we need to authorize that?
Well, we authorized it previously for.
Did?
It was, it was a different attorney at that point.
But I'm not going to speak to David.
Don't give him that option.
So, I don't think we need to reauthorize.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the guidance. Good seeing you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, Wested Self-Storage Site Development Plan, Board to Review Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, a draft FEAF Part Two, draft FEAF Part Three, draft negative declaration, and a draft resolution of preliminary approval. Welcome.
Good evening.
Welcome, Ms. Melkman, Ms. Labruto. Good to see you again.
Nice to see you guys.
And this sounds like a longer item than it probably actually will be because I think we have a lot of documents to go through, but I hope that we can do it in a fairly expeditious manner. But meanwhile, I know that you did submit a, a response letter on June twenty-eighth and I'd love to hear your responses, especially those regarding the public hearing comments that we got.
Sure. So, we, we shared our response in a letter to the board and I think the first comment had to do with impacts to the floodplain or the potential for significant adverse impacts to the floodplain. And there was a comment to the, kind of, the question that whether the planning board had really considered those. And so, we gave our opinion and our opinion was, yeah, the planning board spent a lot of time considering the floodplain impacts and impacts to the water course buffer. And for those reasons, we did a very thorough analysis with cross-sections and data from DEC to determine the potential for impacts to the floodplain. According to FEMA guidance, you can't raise a floodplain greater than one foot from the hundred, hundred-year base flood elevation. And our analysis indicated that we were at a de minimis increase. And when we compared it to the floodplain analysis that was conducted for CHI development nearby, we were nowhere near what they had in terms of total squared footage of fill in the floodplain, and they only raised their floodplain elevation by four inches. So it was a very good demonstration to show that in comparison, our project with minimal, in comparison to them, the minimal fill in the floodplain wouldn't raise the floodplain to one foot or over. So that was the first comment. I, I don't know if you want to speak about that. Further, I could go to the second comment.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you go ahead and go through yours?
Okay. And the second comment, I'm trying to remember it offhand here. Let's see. Just open up that comment.
See, we had an email from Margaret Barton.
Yes.
Who was a resident of Regency of Fishkill. She had some concerns about possible removal of trees as a buffer for Route 84.
Yes.
And concern about the four-story construction and why another storage unit. That was, that was that one.
Great, thank you. Yes, so I mean, we spent quite a bit of time in front of the board discussing the layout of the site to minimize exactly that of impacts to natural resources, including, including the water course buffer and tree removal. We have 0.6 acres of tree removal on a project site. That's four acres. And I think our total impervious is about 20% of the total acreage of the site. There's an elaborate 100 to 125-foot remaining buffer between the site and Interstate I-84. If you'll recall from the, the site plan, there's, there is that stream course that also aligns and runs along I-84. So there's ample buffer that remains. In addition, we are adding both evergreen and deciduous landscaping at the property lines, in areas around parking to buffer parking areas, and to beautify the site generally. With regard to the height of the building, so the zoning district actually permits 70 feet, but our project is only four stories at 47 feet and six inches. And we came to that height, I feel, in collaboration with this board. The board wanted to keep the height that was consistent with buildings surrounding it at West Edge Business Center. And this, this indeed is consistent with building heights that surround the site. In addition, you know, this is the market trend for climate-controlled self-storage facilities to go vertical as opposed to horizontal layouts, which are much more impactful to natural resources and, you know, establish greater impervious footprints. And as it relates to traffic, self-storage is one of the lowest traffic generators out there. We had six trips at the AM peak period and 11 trips at the PM peak period based on the Institute for Transportation Engineers Guidance. So I understand the concerns, but I do feel that the planning board and our engineers in collaboration with the planning board came to a site layout that was really the best for a, a site that has been marked for development for over 20 years as part of the West Edge Business Center development.
Good.
So just, I will say, we did appreciate receiving the draft preliminary approval and secret documentation, and we have no objections to them.
All right. Well, John, why don't you first go through real quickly your memo, which.
Yeah, there, there's really nothing new to discuss in our latest memo. These are really all carryover comments from previous memos indicating the additional approvals that, and permits that they're going to need, the outside regulatory agency approvals, items that are going to be required as part of the building permit process, needing the, the variances that I believe you've applied for at this point.
That's correct.
Once, if they get their neg deck seeker determination tonight, they can continue that process. So really, I would consider the remaining comments in our memo as typical conditions of a site plan approval. So there's really nothing of significance to report.
All right. Do you have any, any questions about any of the, the things in the CPL memo?
No, I, I agree that they were generally minor in spirit and, and adjustable.
All right. Well, John, why don't we keep the ball rolling and move ahead by going through the draft seeker documents that you prepared for the board? And why don't you do all of them, you know, together, and then we can address approvals one at a time?
Doing them all together, meaning?
Meaning go through the full EAF Part II and then go through the neg deck draft.
Oh, right, right through it. Okay. So the, the draft Part II EAF, starting with number one, impact on land, we checked that yes. And underneath that, we identified the action may involve construction on land where depth water table is less than three feet as a small, or no to small impact. Item two, we checked no. Item three, impacts on surface water, we checked that yes, noting 3D and 3H has potential small impacts. Item four, we checked no. Item five, impact on flooding, we checked yes, but again, identifying two of the subsets as potential small impacts. Item six was checked no. Item seven, impact on plants and animals was checked yes. Underneath that, 7B, we identified as a potential small impact. Item eight, we checked no. Item nine, impact on aesthetic resources, we checked yes, but again, under that 9A, we identified as a potential small impact. Item 10, we checked yes, and again, 10B as a potential small impact. Items 11 and 12, we checked no. Item 13, we checked no. 14, no. 15, impact on noise, odor, and light, we checked yes. Again, identifying 11A as a potential small impact. Item 16, we checked no, and also check no for items 17 and 18. There's really nothing to discuss on the Part III. If you guys decide that you're happy with the Part II, you'll simply sign that, sign off on that. So going through the neg deck, I'm not going to go through the description of the action or the location. I think we've all heard that enough. So skipping to the second page of the draft neg deck, under reasons for supporting the determination. Item one discusses the proposed amount of disturbance and the fact that the applicant provided the necessary stormwater pollution prevention plan to address that. They are required to gain coverage through the DEC. Item two discusses the potential impacts to wetlands and floodplains, but again, they provided reports and such to demonstrate that there would be no significant impacts there. Item three, the site was flagged in the EF as potentially containing habitat for being an Indiana bat and timber rattlesnake. The applicant submitted correspondence from the DEC stating that no impacts of the rattlesnakes would be likely, and they've also provided the standard tree clearing notes on the plans for the Indiana bat. Item four, the site was flagged for potential proximity to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sensitivity. However, the site does not contain such an area. Item five talks about, it's a standard noise pollution, but they, per the zoning ordinance, working hours are to be limited to between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. And item six simply states that the action will not result in any impacts on geological features, air, agricultural, aesthetic, open spaces and recreation, and energy resources or transportation systems, or human health.
Thank you. I just have one possible suggestion for adding to item number four on the sensitivity for archaeological resources, adding wording something like this. This is referring back basically to the letter that we received from New York State Opposite Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, which reviewed this project. And in a letter dated 12/9/22, stated that it is the opinion of OPRHP that no properties including archaeological and or historic resources listed in or eligible for the New York State and National Registers of Historic Places will be impacted by this project. So I thought if we add that wording, it just simply expands and clarifies the process that we went through to get those determinations. So if we add that wording, Debbie, don't worry, I have the wording for you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to see what board members thought about adding that and, you know, John, if you think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that, I think that's a good idea.
That'd be appropriate.
Okay. All right. Any other such additions or clarifications that board members want to make?
No.
How about you, Dominic?
No, sir.
All right. All right. Well, let's go through the environmental assessment forms for adoption. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the EAF Parts Two and Three for the proposed Westage Self-Storage Site Development Plan as discussed tonight and authorize the chair to sign these?
Some will.
All right. Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Robbie seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. That passes seven to zero. Is there a motion to approve the negative declaration, draft number four, for the proposed Westage Self-Storage Site Development Plan as discussed and revised tonight and authorize the chair to sign it? Somebody like to move it?
Some move.
Second.
Anthony moves it. Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes seven to zero. So moving right along, let's go to the draft resolution of preliminary approval. Dominic, would you like to lead us through that?
Sure. I prepared a draft, the one that was circulated to you should be dated June 27th and noted as draft number two. This will be a resolution of preliminary approval for the Westage Self-Storage Site Development Plan. As typical, the very first few pages go through the procedural status of the project. There is a blank on page two for the date of the adoption of the negative declaration, which would be today's date. On page three of six, it indicates that the board is making certain findings in connection with the site development plan, including the location of the project and how it fits into the surrounding area, is finding a letter A. Finding letter B relates to the fact that the project was, and the application was referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for its review, and that the planning department recommended that the board rely on its own study of the facts with due consideration of its comments. And the third finding is in fact relating to the waiver, to that reduces the number of provided onsite parking spaces. The conditions of the approval including, include the satisfaction of the outstanding engineering comments for his prior memo, which we previously discussed. There are also outside agency approvals required, which include the Village of Fishkill for the extension of water and sewer service to the site, approval from Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health for the extension of water and sewer service to the site, approval of the Zoning Board of Appeals for any area variances, and any other approvals identified in the EAF or otherwise as may be required. One of the items that I included in the preliminary approval resolution was proof of easement and road maintenance agreement for lot 6B. I had gone back through the materials I had previously submitted, and if it had been submitted previously, then I'm sorry I missed it, but I didn't find it. And so I'm sure that this lot being created many decades ago, that there was some consideration hopefully given for the right to actually access that lot, but providing proof of that, I think, would be helpful. And then the last condition is reimbursing the town for the cost of its review of this particular application. And once again, this would only be preliminary approval, and if and when the project comes back before the board for a request for conditional final, there would be more detailed conditions that would be included at that time.
Thank you. So I think there were some blanks that we need to fill in with dates. So on page two, there's the, to the third, whereas includes the date of the neg deck adopted today, so it would be July 13th, 2023.
Correct.
On page four, at number one at the top, I think the date of the town engineer's memo was July 10th, 2023, from, that we reviewed today. I just have one more possible addition in 2C on that same page for approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals of any area. I think we should probably add and/or sign variances because I think those have now been submitted to this EDA.
Thank you.
Other than that, that's all I had. Any other, any other comments or suggested revisions?
Yep.
So is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary approval for Westage Self-Storage Site Development Plan as discussed and revised tonight and authorize the chair to sign it?
I'll make the motion.
Brad moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. So I think we did it.
Wonderful. We really appreciate everybody's assistance and patience as we work through this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Let's keep moving right along. So we're back now with the project review for Dutchess Storage, formerly known as Keep Smart Self-Storage Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit, Board to Review a Draft FEAF Part II, Draft FEAF Part III, Draft Negative Declaration, and Draft Resolution of Preliminary Site Development Plan Approval and Special Use Permit Approval. So this was classified as a Type 1 action under seeker at the May meeting, and the notice of intent for the planning board to serve as lead agency was circulated to involve the interested agencies on June 1st. So the 30-day time period for receiving comments on lead agency expired on July 2nd. So I mentioned earlier that we did receive a letter dated June 28th, 2023, from the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, indicating that they have no objection to the planning board serving as lead agency, but they also commented that the proposed facility will need arrangements for a water supply. That's fairly obvious, which will be, would need to be approved by the department. They also state that the Blenker Health Water District is proposing a water main to be located adjacent to the property along Route 52, and that depending located adjacent to the property along Route 52, and that depending on the timing of the two projects, the facility should connect to the public water supply if it is available. So again, this is a, this is up for preliminary approvals at this point, along with the SEACER documents. You know, there will be some time intervening within which we can probably figure out a little more detail about the water supply, if there are going to need to be any, any changes in the plans, but it sounds like it could be quite a ways off before the public water main is actually there, ready to be connected to. And then we also discussed the letter from DOT that was dated July 13th, 2023. And again, I'll just, I'll reiterate that primarily the NIST indicated they're currently in the preliminary design phase for constructing a roundabout at the intersection of Route 52 and 82. That will have some ramifications for the emergency access driveway that was shown on the plan. This is kind of an aside to the board members, but what I'd like to do is contact DOT to request that they consider the town's adopted comprehensive plan update relative to this specific area, including A, that the CPU comprehensive plan update identifies this area as an important gateway entrance to the town, and the design of any roundabout and related improvements should take this into consideration. And B, the CPU specifically cites the need for sidewalks in this area of Route 52, along with other pedestrian safety improvements. And by the way, I know that we talked about that a little bit more earlier in the meeting. But I'd, I'd like to kind of just be in more direct communication with DOT about the need for pedestrian safety improvements that stem specifically from our comprehensive plan update. And C, the CPU identifies the Arrowhead intersection of Routes 52 and 82. That includes the recently installed statue of Daniel Nimmo as an historically important and sensitive site, and that DOT should take this into consideration as well. So unless I hear any objections from board members, I'd like to maybe draft a letter or email or some form of communication with DOT so that we can follow up on some of these things. Okay.
Chairman, I may just for a brief moment, two comments. One is with respect to the statue, Chief Nimmo statue. During our conversations, DOT was acutely aware of the town's interest in that, and indicated they were taking that into consideration in their design. So I think reinforcing that in a letter would be met well by them. Also with respect to sidewalks, as much as we tried to persuade them, it wasn't necessary for us to construct those, they were quite keen that that be done as well, so rest assured that's going to occur. And then with respect to the health department's comment on water, I want to remind the board that we did early on, when we first had a pre-meeting, we learned just to the fact that the water districts were being extended, we're not within the water district. We've had discussions with the town supervisor about joining the water district, but it's a question of which pipe will get there first and how to do it. So for us to get our approvals where we will be using a well, and of course, it's to our advantage for our fire suppression system and long-term use of the property to be connected to the water supply systems to become available. What the plans were asking to be approved do not show connection to the central water system because of that, we don't know which one.
Okay. And also just in terms of the overall roundabout project that DOT is planning, I mean, it's interesting that we really heard for the first time from you as the applicant about it, and so I think at this point, now that everyone's aware of it, we really need to involve the town directly with DOT in terms of especially some of these things that I mentioned. And you know, I mean, actually a roundabout, when you think about it, has a lot of opportunities for pursuing the things I mentioned that are in our comprehensive plan update objectives and goals. It's just that we need to see some actual designs from DOT, and even though it's probably fairly preliminary in their planning, it's not too early to start that process. So that's directed to DOT more so than to the applicant. So the public hearing on this proposal was continued tonight and closed. So before we get to going through the SEACER documents, just wondering if the applicant has any other questions or comments you'd like to make, and then we'll move right on to those documents.
Mr. Chairman, we have no further comments. Thank you.
All right. All right, where shall we start? John, let's, let's do the same thing for the draft EAF parts two and three, and then go on to the draft negative declaration.
Okay. Before, before I get into the draft EAF, just a follow-up on the meeting we had with DOT, not only do they intend to have sidewalks along the front of this project, but they said they would be requiring sidewalks on both sides of 52 and both sides of 82. One thing they do not intend to incorporate in their design plans is any kind of pedestrian access to the median where the statue is. They do not want to encourage pedestrian crossing the roundabout to get to it. So that may be something you want to.
Yeah.
Because I told them if, if the project involves moving the statue, I don't want to be the one to tell the town, so. But their thought was if they had to move it, it would only be, you know, maybe five, 10 feet one way or the other. I just, you know, I'm just putting you on alert so that.
Well, I see that the town supervisor is sitting in the audience, so I'm not going to ask you to speak on this, Ozzy, but I, I will just.
You didn't hear that from me.
I will, I will on your behalf mention that I think, I think from the comprehensive plan update point of view, and from maybe what some of us are thinking, that we may want to talk further with DOT about access to the roundabout where if the statue was going to continue to be there, because I know there have been events there. It's kind of like closing your eyes and hoping the cars don't hit you when you cross an unsafe road that doesn't have a crosswalk. Okay, if that's how DOT wants to approach it, all right, but I don't think that's the best way to approach it.
Maybe they can bring the pedestrian bridge.
A pedestrian bridge, possibly, yeah.
Well, now's the time to ask those questions because they are in preliminary designs.
And again, I think this is something probably bigger than even just the planning board. It's, it's going back to our comprehensive plan update, but I think the town board will also have some definite interest in what's happening out there.
Indeed.
So having said that.
Yeah.
Why don't you go ahead, John?
So the draft part two, this is going to be pretty similar to the previous one. Item one, impact on land, we checked yes, and identified 1A, 1E, and 1F as potential small impacts only. Items two, item two, we checked no. Item three, impacts on surface water, we checked yes, and identified 3D and 3H as potential small impacts. Item four, impacts on groundwater, we checked yes, identified 4A as a potential small impact. Five, impact on flooding, checked yes, and identified 5B, C, D, B, C, and D as potential small impacts. Item six, we checked no. Item seven, impacts on plants and animals, we checked yes, and 7B as a potential small impact. Oh, and also 7F as a potential small impact.
That's the floodplain forest, right?
I'm sorry?
I think that's the floodplain forest that they're, that that's referring to. Sorry, the floodplain forest in item F is the significant natural community.
Yes, correct. Impacts on agricultural resources, we checked no. Impact on aesthetic resources, we checked yes, identifying 9A as a potential small impact. 10 and 11 and 12 are all checked no. Impact on transportation, item 13, we checked yes, identifying F, other impacts as a potential large impact, because, and what we wrote in there is a town of Fishkill, complete streets policy in the town code and in the comprehensive plan update, point to the need for a sidewalk on the site's frontage on Route 52, and that's been discussed tonight. Impact on energy, checked yes, identifying 14D as a potential small impact. Impact on noise, odor, and light, we checked yes, identifying 15A as a potential small impact. Impact on human health, we checked yes, identifying 16A as a potential small impact. And item 17, consistency with community plans, we checked yes. Again, identifying under each other, the town's comprehensive plan update designates this area of Route 52 as an important gateway entrance to the town, which was also discussed this evening. And then the last item, we checked no, consistency with the community character. And again, the part three is simply, if you agree with the part two, you'll be signing off on that. So moving on to the neg deck, draft number four dated June 30th, 2023. First page goes over the description of the action and the location. Skipping over to the second page, the reasons for supporting the draft neg deck. Item one, as with the previous neg deck, talks about the amount of disturbance and how the applicant prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan to combat the impacts, and they must gain coverage through the state speedy permit. Item two discusses wetlands associated with the site and what they intend to do. And again, the SWIP covers this, the improvements that they intend to make. The item three discusses the well to serve the project, and identifies that the site is located in the town of Fishkill's aquifer protection overlay, and will conform to the standards set forth therein. Four discusses the endangered species, specifically habitat for the Indian Apache and potentially part of a floodplain forest. However, the site is unlikely to have the proper conditions for that habitat. We also discuss the Nimmo statue, which has been designated as historically sensitive by the town of Fishkill. As the statue is not located on the site, there should be no adverse impact to this historic site, however, we shall see what DOT comes up with. Item six discusses the, the location of the site adjacent to Routes 52 and 82 and the town's complete streets policy. We talked about the preliminary stages of the DOT's plans to put a roundabout there, and the county's GML referral letter recommending sidewalks, and that was discussed this evening. Item eight talks about noise pollution and the adhering to the working hours between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Nine identifies the site as located within 1,200 feet of the Brinkerhoff Elementary School, which is a pretty, pretty decent separation, so it should not have any adverse impacts. And then item 10 simply states that the action will not result in any impacts on geological features, air, agricultural, open spaces and recreation, energy resources, or human health.
All right, thank you, John. Any questions or comments or suggested revisions from board members? I don't have any myself.
No.
All right. Shall we move ahead to motions?
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the EAF parts two and three for the proposed Dutchess Storage Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit as discussed tonight and authorize the chair to sign these?
Some moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. Is there a motion to approve the negative declaration, draft number four, for the proposed Dutchess Storage Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit as discussed tonight and to authorize the chair to sign it?
Moved.
Right, Robbie moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Brad seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. All right, and that brings us to the resolution of preliminary approval, site development plan and special use permit. Again, over to Dominic to review draft number three.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is draft number three dated June 27th. Very similar to the last project for Westage. This is a resolution of preliminary approval. The difference here is, of course, that this is a site development plan and a special use within this area, so we included those provisions as well. The first two pages really recite the procedural history of the project, as well as top of page three, has a blank space for the fact that the public hearing was closed this evening, so that should be included as July 13th, 2023. And the, whereas, actually, no, the resolution sections of the resolution include the required findings in connection with the layout of the site development plan in connection with the adjoining area. It's very similar to the last one around, this having deja vu all over again. Finding B is in connection with the approval, application met the requirements for referral to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, and that they recommended that the board rely on its own study of facts. And the planning board also is making the finding here that is recommending that the applicant seek the input and direction from the DOT regarding the possible installation of the sidewalk, which has been discussed already tonight. And then the next section is a resolution that includes the required findings for the special use permit approval. And then moving forward, once again, this is preliminary approval only, so these are conditions relating to the projects moving forward before the board. It would have to return to the board for any kind of conditional final approval. The first one would be addressing the outstanding engineering comments. The second one is the outstanding, outside agency approvals that are required, including approval from the New York State DOT for work permit for any construction work or drainage improvements in the Route 52 right-of-way, approval of the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health if required, and any other approvals that were included in the EAF. The next condition is an error on my part that was included. It was carried forward actually from the Westage project, and so it wouldn't necessarily apply here, because that was for the Westage site. It could be a placeholder for another condition in connection with, with, you know.
We could simply delete that and then change number four to number three.
Yes, that would be the simplest thing to do. You know, once again, this project is going to have to return to the board for, with a request for conditional final approval, and the standard conditions that are associated with any kind of conditional final approval could be considered by the board at that time.
Let's see, Mr. Ward Willis, did you have? Let's see, Mr. Ward Willis, did you have, I think you maybe had noted some possible corrections that needed to be made?
I did, if you don't mind, and we appreciate the opportunity to review and the courtesy provided to us in advance. I'm going to start with the more substantive one on page five, under the outside agency approvals required, two A. And I just want to make sure we're specific, given the nature of the DOT roundabout improvement not being designed, that A should read approval by the NYSDOT of the Mississippi addition, a temporary entrance parenthetical construction closed perennet work permit. So we're receiving a temporary entrance construction permit. DOT can't issue us a work permit because of the geometric geometry, the intersection won't be fully designed.
So I could repeat the temporary, what is it?
Temporary entrance and perennet construction closed perennet amended work permit. So it's just clarifying that says a temporary entrance construction work permit.
That meets the intent of the section, certainly.
Thank you. The other ones are just some minor clarifications on page one to fifth bullet.
Excuse me, did you say 52 or 82 when you were reading that?
Fifty-two.
Okay, thank you.
On page one to fifth bullet point, where it says there will be 17 parking spaces, of which 34 to be land banked, there just needs to be a comma, so it reads 17 parking spaces, comma, 34 parking spaces to be land banked. It provides 17 dedicated spaces and 34 land banked.
That's the all-important comma.
Yes.
Never have too many.
And then on page three, in the paragraph beginning with now therefore be resolved, it read found, I thought it should read finds, but it's just a grammatical matter.
Finds, okay.
And then that same comment on page four, the word found should be revised to read finds, and no other commas.
I think there's only, there's one blank on page four, at the bottom of the page, town engineers memo dated May 31, 2023. I think that was the most recent memo you did, John. And were there any other dates that we missed? I know the
Just the NEGDEC.
The NEGDEC, July 13th, 2023. And I think you mentioned the public hearing closed July 13th, 2023. Any other comments or revisions from board members?
No.
Is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary approval for Dutchess storage site development plan and special use permit as discussed and revised tonight and authorize the chair to sign it?
So moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that passes seven to zero.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for your courtesy and professionalism in processing our application on behalf of our clients, Mr. Langen and Mr. Hutton. We appreciate the board's service. Thank you.
Thanks for coming and sitting through a quite long meeting, but you get to go home and you don't.
True. If George ran about, we're going to relocate the statue and see where it's stored.
That's true.
Thank you.
Well, we got to start moving quickly here, but the next item is Basis Industrial Route 9D Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on June 28th, 2023. So would you like to update the board on the recent submission, which understandably is really more conceptual in nature than anything else, but please go ahead and give us an update.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is George Ellison-Drotos from Keenan Bean. We represent the applicant Basis Industrial with me tonight. As always, we have Anthony Scoville from Basis Industrial, Chris Michalik from SGW Architecture, and then we have Dynamic Engineering Cory Chase and Daniel Sen Hall. As you stated, this submission is more of a conceptual thing. We heard your comments last meeting, we wanted to address all of them, but we didn't necessarily want to create full-on engineering plans until we had a quote-unquote blessing from the board and a blessing from CPL to know that we can move forward. There were some concerns last time about, for example, the height and site circulation. There was some concerns about square footage, FAR, things like that, so we've addressed that. So right on the screen now, and let me zoom in for you a little bit, and we don't have a direct comparison, but in the papers that we submitted, we included sort of that overall layout, that colorful layout from the prior iteration, so that you guys can see directly what we've changed, but there's a few major things to point out here. First of all, as you can probably tell, if I can get this to drag a little bit, the storage building itself has a different shape, it has a different layout, right? So whereas it used to be sort of long and along the back of the property, now we've squared it out a little bit. The footprint has increased, but the FAR has actually gone down because now it's two stories with a cellar. And so what that addresses was a comment last time about maybe we could need a variance for a third story. Now we've gotten rid of that variance. We've also gotten rid of the FAR variance. The footprint of this building is a little larger, but again, there's only two stories above the ground. The fast food on the right remains in the same place. It went from 3,190 square feet to a proposed 2,723 square feet, so quick math says that's about 450 or so square feet, 450, 500 square feet. And then down toward the front here, we've moved the car wash. The car wash used to be along the front here, right along 9D. Now the car wash has been moved sort of to the, let's call it the top left of the property when facing it from 9D. It's also a little smaller, it's about 500 square feet smaller, but it's in a place that makes more sense considering the gas station there. What this allowed us to do was also address site circulation. So whereas it used to be an entrance into the gas station and then the car washed and then it was sort of cut off, and there was a comment last meeting, well, what happens if you want to keep going to the rest of the site? Do you have to come back out and go on Route 9D again? Well, now we've addressed that, and we have this pass-through lane here that allows you to access the property. You could get gas, wash your car, stop at the storage, and then get fast food at home if you want to do that, right? So you could do it all in one shot. So these are some of the things that we really, we heard your comments, we heard the concerns, they were very valid, and we wanted to address them. So we've come up with this conceptual plan in order to see, to get your temperature on this and see what you guys think about this? Is this a better way to approach it? And if so, for the next meeting, we'll work on, you know, full engineering plans, better architectures. There was a comment from CPL about black and white, this one color last time, so things like that we can iron out. And addressing all the CPL comments from that first memo or whatever new comments would be issued because some of them would be irrelevant now given the site design, we're ready to do that, but we just wanted to sort of get your temperature on this. Pappas Lane was another thing that we discussed last time. We talked about cleaning it up, making it more accessible for the properties in the back. This new plan also involves cleaning up Pappas Lane on this right side here. The left side, I believe it's the bank, I forget what bank it is there, but they sort of cleaned up that road. This would include cleaning up Pappas Lane, this lane right here, all the way up to the top here. So that's another comment that was made that we wanted to address.
When you say, just a question, when you say cleaning up, what does that mean?
Cleaning up the area, I believe paving the road and stuff like that, you know, making it a nicer, more accessible route for the people in the back. We've also added a right-in, right-out here, again, circulation. We understand the concern about left turns in on Route 9D. We understand the concern, maybe someone's going with a U-Haul and they're not experienced, you know, with a big trailer, right? Those are concerns. We don't, we want to help the town, we want to work with the town, we want to be good for the community. So we think that these changes have addressed some of the concerns. We hope they've addressed all of them, but we are here to discuss any other concerns you may have with this conceptual plan. We do have our traffic engineer, we have our site engineer, we have our architect. So any questions like that, please feel free, and we're ready to answer them.
All right. Well, before we do that, before we open up to questions, why don't we go through the CPL memo dated July 10th? So this looks like it was kind of a, maybe a combined effort between John and Liz and other people, David Hastings. So I don't know how you guys want to handle it, but
Okay. So it's a memo that basically says for some issues, everything in our prior memo, as you know, remains to be addressed. And so really, no change to our seeker comments in terms of our general comments. The reason that I pointed out the difference in the plans is I was having trouble figuring out whether or not on the plan that's black and white, were you trying to show existing medians or proposed medians? That was a little, because the line was kind of light and I just wasn't sure. So that's just something you clarify next time. And so we noticed that the one-story car wash got a little smaller and that the one-story fast food got a little smaller, but that the storage building is quite a bit larger. It's 30% larger in footprint and gross floor area. I noticed that you did have a lower level. And the thing that, you know, obviously, we said, hey, we didn't have architectural illustrations, but understand that you're trying to get our feedback in this meeting so that hopefully we'll see something later. And then the one thing I wanted to do was to try to look into a comparison in terms of bulk, but I didn't have any dimensions on the other one, so I don't know that it matters now. Anyway, the one thing I think that's important is obviously the bigger building that you have just kind of looks bigger and boxier and, I don't know, just, you know, I'm trying to picture what that's going to look like, one, you know, flat facade facing the road, not much between the road and that. So that's a concern because it's just going to probably look a little monolithic on 9D. I mean, this is a commercial area. On the other hand, it's also a gateway corridor overlay area, so I think the town is hoping for development that's a lot more aesthetically sensitive. You know, this is a community with a lot of development, a lot of development pressure, and a pretty robust set of zoning requirements, and the whole purpose is to try to have some decent-looking quality development. So we'd be very interested in seeing the architecture on that. Before I get into the traffic, there were a few traffic comments from Dave Hastings, our traffic engineer, but the gross floor area of 118,002 square feet, again, 30% increase from the prior building, that qualifies as a type-one action. So just wanted to point that out to the board. It didn't, it wasn't in my comments, but Jonathan and I had a discussion today and I looked it up, so that would be a type-one action. And then on traffic, one of the comments is the plans show that the existing curb cut for the gas station remains close to the traffic signal. It was previously recommended that the curb cut be closed because it's, because it's so close to the driveway and to the nearby stop bar. So, and that's why I tried to look at the plans and figure out at that corner, Pappas Lane, it's kind of hard for me to tell, where do you, it looks like you have, you could either go in the front right from the road, or you could go around that little median and go up Pappas and go in that way. And I just thought, you know, from a plebeian standpoint, I'm only a planner, that it would make sense to have the entire frontage closed off to access where the gas station is, so that people would have to go into Pappas, and you wouldn't have the possibility of cars trying to sneak out in that little driveway and cut into the lane. It just kind of adds an unnecessary conflict at that point on a kind of a busy road with a site that's going to become quite busy. So that's comment 11. And then in general, I'm thinking this has, I think it's more than three points of access, but I think it's pretty clear that it's possible for this site to maybe only have Pappas Lane and the access for the fast food place, because theoretically, storage doesn't have a ton of traffic. You don't need to have a whole lot of in and out, so somebody could come in at the fast food end and find their way to their storage unit, or if there are lots of trips over to the gas station, they can get in there from Pappas. And that's, I think, a little bit better controlled intersection where it will be once we're done, you know, doing the traffic review here. So that's just a suggestion that the applicant consider bringing this down to Pappas Lane and one other point of access. I think that would be a vote in favor of some sanity there. Let's see. It wasn't clear to me if the project site actually includes the gas station or is the gas station an out parcel and you would have to do off-site improvements.
The gas station is on the project site.
It is on the project site, okay.
So I
Then, that's fine.
This might show it a little better, because I know, that reminds me, we did, oh, we did discuss that at the last meeting, and I think we sort of
Only because when I look, it's kind of, I see, okay.
This is part, and let me close these boxes so everyone can get a closer view. The gas station, so this has a couple of things going on here, right? We have the property in question in this white shade. We have the parcels outlined in blue.
Yep.
We have the zones outlined, so this is the GB here, this is the R15, and then this hatch here is the area of the proposed development at this point.
Right.
Obviously, the reason the gas station is not hatched is because
You're not, you're not doing anything, okay.
Yeah, but it is part of the parcels, not the parcels.
Okay.
And it actually, as Liz was mentioning, it actually has important aspects of access and circulation, because even now, without the other development, the gas station creates some real problems with traffic kind of winding in and out, depending how they're accessing it through the sort of more open curbs that are there. And there all the time are cars, you know, zooming in and out, creating all kinds of potential problems, so the more, the larger development going on on the site is just going to make that worse. So I think Liz is right that, and probably Dave also, that finding ways to restrict access to the gas station from what is now available and making it a more logical setup would really help the whole site function better and would improve the safety on Route 9D, so.
Absolutely. We hear you loud and clear. All the comments definitely make sense. In terms of traffic, we do have our traffic expert here, so he can talk to that, talk about curb cuts, talk about access on Pappas Lane. There was also concerns with the potential look of the storage building, and we have our architect here as well that can touch on that, right? Because it is a little more boxy now, has a larger footprint, but it's two stories as opposed to three, so there is compromise, but I'm not an architect, so I've got the architect to discuss that for you guys. And again, we want to get feedback, we want to have the dialogue, so.
Okay, and one question that was kind of nagging at me is why, why was the storage gross floor area increased?
I can have the architect speak to that. I mean, that's probably a business decision, I would imagine, but that's something that the architect would be able to better speak to Chris over here, so I don't know if you guys have preference, or if you want to hear it from first, architectural or traffic.
Well, let's do this. Let's get some more questions and comments from planning board members, so we can then kind of put them all together as questions. Let me just start off by adding on to what Liz was saying about the larger size self-storage I mean, so I appreciate that the car wash and self-storage facility have been relocated in concept, and they do seem to be in more logical places on the site. But I don't agree, and you know, Liz was questioning it, but whether the new size of the self-storage facility would be appropriate in its new location, because it's kind of in a more prominent central location and closer to Route 9D. So unless it's really carefully done and So unless it's really carefully done, and again, that's architecture, but also I think perhaps scaling back the size of that building would help, so I think that needs to be looked at. But I think the main concern is what is the visual impact on Route 9 going to be of that facility in particular.
Can you go back to the other picture?
Oh, is that the, the new concept?
Yeah, the new concept.
Yeah. So before, you got the idea that the original proposal was not as close to Route 9D and it was kind of more.
Can you put the other one up? Oh, okay.
It froze a little bit, yeah. So this was the original.
There you go, yeah.
High-level kind of colorful drawing, you can see all the buildings. So, yeah, the storage, this was the quote-unquote "original" storage proposal. The new proposal does have the storage building closer to Route 9D, but that.
Oh, the mic, can you get the mic?
Oh, sorry. The new proposal has, obviously, it is a little closer to Route 9D, and that's a byproduct of the property. It's a byproduct of trying to get the site circulation and get these kinds of things, right? So it's a lot more than, I mean, ideally, yeah, you want it to be further back, you want it to be nicer. But again, the architect, Chris, is ready. He can discuss, you know, alleviate any concerns you might have about visuals from Route 9D or from otherwise. Again, I do want to point out that what I think is important is that it is now two stories, right? So even, I'm not saying it will be, but even if it was the same exact looking building, there's a difference between having a three-story building even set further back and having a two-story building that might be more prominent. But aspect-wise, looking at a two-story building, it might be more pleasing to the eye in that respect. But again, I'm not an architect, it's all personal opinion, so we could discuss that for sure.
It's going to have, it's two stories, but it's going to have a self, so is it going to be actually three-story, one under?
In terms of, that has to do more with the site grading, I believe, which I'm not absolutely familiar with, but Dan, you might be able to speak to it, or Chris might be able to speak to it, in terms of what that sort of looks like in actuality versus concept.
Yeah, why don't we hear from the experts on that building in particular, and then if we need to move on to other issues later.
Absolutely.
If you don't mind, I'd like to jump in soon.
Yeah.
I'll wait for them to come up.
Good evening, Chris Michleck, SGW Architecture. So in general, I think that the plan that you're looking at right now was a definitive response to the, you know, why don't you make the footprint bigger and make it shorter? I mean, that was one of the biggest comments from the last session, right? So.
Not really.
When looking at that.
Yeah, I'm not sure we necessarily suggested that the footprint be bigger, larger.
Well, there was a discussion about eliminating the height variances.
Well, yeah.
As well as the FAR variances.
But that doesn't necessarily mean increasing the square footage of the overall building.
Well, so let me get to that point. The comment that was made in the previous CPL memo was, you're under on your lot coverage, why not make your footprint bigger and reduce the height? Right?
Yeah, Dan was coming.
So in doing that, we also took the further step of saying, well, if we're going to go to two stories, we should absolutely just not ask for an FAR variance at all, because, I mean, it would be appropriate to eliminate as many variances as possible. So in doing so, a two-story version with this footprint would have brought us in under the square footage as previously proposed.
So can I play around with this a little bit? So I guess the comment was about, take that.
Right.
You know, get rid of the height variance and spread it out.
Correct.
A little bit over two stories.
Correct.
But this is, if I'm not mistaken, an increase in gross floor area, too.
It is.
So I guess I was thinking, the gross floor area wouldn't change, but the building would be a little shorter, and be a little longer, maybe a little deeper. That was the concept, so that's why.
No, I completely understand.
I was trying to give a friendly hint.
And taking the extra step of eliminating the FAR variance. And we could build half a basement and have the same gross square footage as we had before. Right now, it's two stories above grade maxes out our FAR, .4 for the site, no variance Adding the cellar to then bring the, that two-story square footage back up to what was previously proposed, the minimum square footage that my client would require to make this economically feasible, we just simply made the entire footprint, an entire cellar. Furthermore, because we are doing a cellar, that is, has an economic impact. There is, it is more costly to put a third of the building in the ground as opposed to above ground. So there is a economic reality of needing a little bit more square footage to cover that extra construction cost as well. So the impact and bulk of the building above grade is smaller than the previous proposal.
Say it again.
The volume of the building above grade is smaller than the previous proposal. It may look a little bit imposing, because this is just a giant big rectangle in concept. Obviously, we would articulate the facade in a manner that would be appropriate for a gateway segment of Fishco.
I'm just curious what it would have been if you had done just two stories without the basement, which you're saying is costly, and had a similar gross floor area as you had before? That was the part I'm having trouble wrapping my brain.
It does not fit.
You need a much bigger rectangle.
You need a bigger rectangle. Keep in mind, we're also addressing site circulation issues here. We've got two-way drives that can completely circulate around this entire site without having to go out into 9D. That takes up space. We also don't want to ask for any yard variances, so when putting parking in front of a building on 9D, we need a 75-foot setback. So that corner kind of on the lower left here, that is, that's 75 feet right there. That's what's setting that, that distance. Furthermore.
Curious a second.
Sure, yeah.
Maybe it sounds like a dumb statement, but the original rendering, and you got the three stories back there.
Yes.
So if you were to do the three stories, but do it the way you want to do it with below grade, the first story, and leave the footprint where it was, was, what was the reasoning of pulling it forward and putting the car wash on the outside?
Well, we always, we thought that this, well, it had a lot to do with the site circulation comments. Having the car wash in between the gas station and the fast food complicated the circulation in between those two buildings. So by moving the car wash behind the gas station, which actually kind of feels better anyway, it feels like it's part of the gas station.
Yeah.
And it really, we felt that it really just reorganized the site in a very logical manner. We've got a gas station, car wash on one end, it's, you can almost, you can almost imagine these as like separating lots at this point, you know? There's the self-storage in the middle, and then there's the fast food on the end. So throughout all of that exercise, and, you know, with consultation with traffic and civil and the attorneys and the clients, you know, we felt that this was a much more organized plan, a better plan. That's why we, and it is radically different from what we proposed earlier. That's why we want your preliminary feedback before we do full engineering on it and facades.
I would like to see the current, the now-current location of the self-storage facility, but with a somewhat reduced footprint, and submitting kind of a conceptual look of what it would look like in that type of configuration. And maybe even seeing if there's some way of making it look less boxy than that, does the footprint sort of suggest?
We'll definitely make it look less boxy. I mean, this, again, this is a rectangle on a page, just to kind of indicate, here's a general location of where it's going to be, this is the concept.
I'm just saying, without going to, you know, too much architectural and engineering at this point, give us a good look of what it really might be able to look like, just in a conceptual way.
Sure.
But again, also, I think to me, a part of that would be reducing the footprint. You know, I'm not going to come up with any kind of a threshold, but like, just to.
I mean, is it just a, like, it feels like it's a big rectangle, so it feels too big?
Well, again, it's.
Because this is FAR compliant.
Yeah, it's largely the location and the proximity to Route 9D that I'm worried about.
One, one, one point that I want to bring out as well is that in front of the parking, in front of the storage, there is quite a substantial planting area, landscape area, much larger than it was before. It could be a mitigating factor to the location of the storage to the site. Again, the storage is code-compliant in its setback and its FAR, so.
Here's an idea, maybe if you can put together a kind of a little concept drawing as if you were viewing from Route 9D.
Absolutely.
What the building, with some just generic landscaping in between as a buffer, would have it look like?
Yeah, absolutely. We could certainly do that.
Something tall, a few tall things at least.
Yeah, right, some of those plantings would have to start off at fairly good size.
And at only two stories, you know, the height of the building is going to decrease from its originally proposed 35 feet, so it's, we're going down to, you know, 25 feet here. It's, I mean, I think that's impactful on the site as well. 25 feet high, 75 feet.
Parking, you know, the 27 spaces seems to be off too.
Oh, the parking for the fast food?
Well, it's sort of, it looks like you're putting the spaces, I mean, if anybody is, I mean, you have like seven spaces at the proposed storage, but 27 spaces off be to the side of the fast food. Only four at the food station, it just kind of seems as a long trek if you're trying to go to the storage.
Oh, yeah, the 27 spaces over on that end is strictly for the fast food. No one would park there to go to the storage.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
It's, this would have two interior loading boards, which would be large enough for Uval trucks, but in practice is, you know, three or four SUVs. That's where most of the loading and unloading would happen. Any ancillary trips that a customer may take would be, they would probably park in the parking in front of the building. Again, as you've probably heard at least five times maybe today, self-storage is a very low generating parking.
Yeah, don't say that again, please.
Yeah.
We also had, I think, tonight, four self-storage facilities in front of us, so please. I think Felix needs to jump in here.
If you don't mind, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I do want to say I thank you for my concerns about making a left on Pappas, so this way, you know, if you're going to self-storage, you're not doing a left somewhere else on 9D that makes sense, and that you connected everything. When I first looked at this, I liked the idea of the layout, but the other layout, the building was set back.
Yes.
And that grades down a bit, too.
It does.
Okay. Now, the other building was how tall?
35 feet to the top of the roof.
How tall is this one?
About 25 feet.
Okay, so, because it, it didn't say, what did it say on the plans? It doesn't say that.
I don't think we had a height listed on this.
And that's what was confusing me, it didn't say how tall it was.
Yeah, yeah.
When I looked at one of them, it made it seem like it was taller. So you're talking 25 feet?
Yeah, correct. It's a full-story shorter, above ground, yeah.
All right, so that, at least that mitigates, because as you bring it closer, it has an impact. So I wasn't sure how high it was, and that was one of my biggest concerns, because if it was close to the other height, then it would have been hard.
Right, yeah.
Okay, 25 feet, I think, okay. Yeah, I think part of it, if we can figure out, I want to, same thing as Mr. Chairman said, I would love to see a visual.
Absolutely.
Because I think it would help us to get a feel for what it's going to look like.
Absolutely.
The stuff you gave us for the first one was great, but, you know, I know you don't want to go too deep into it, just for the concept.
I think our goal here tonight is, is there enough promise in this plan that we can go very deep on our next submission? That's really what we're, kind of the feedback we're looking for.
What is the purpose of the cellar?
It's really just to recoup some of the gross square footage that a two-story building would not, an FAR-compliant two-story building would not be able to provide for the size of the building.
I don't understand what that means.
So the FAR is only counted.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Above grade, right? So.
I'm asking what the idea of the cellar, what's going to be the purpose of the cellar?
Oh, it's going to be storage units.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, that was the question.
It's like, we took a three-story building and sunk it down, I mean, to your point. It's exactly that.
So it'll be, how big would those storage units be?
In the basement, you know, the basement and the second floor, typically, you've got a smaller unit mix anyway. You're not going to put your big units on those floors, because more stuff usually goes on the first floor. You know, it'll vary between, the biggest size unit in the basement would probably be a 10 by 15, down to a 5 by 5, and sizes in between.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm sorry, there's one more last thing. There's a, on that side, there's a pylon sign, it says on the.
Oh, yeah, I think we would have moved that to Pappas Lane, because that's going to be our new main entrance.
Okay.
At the signalized entry, at the signalized intersection. That's the idea here, at least.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, a question about this mini-drive that's still left in and that's intended to be left in, left out as well?
We left it like that right now. I think our traffic engineer can discuss further. I mean, we talked about making that a right-in, right-out as well.
That'd be my preference.
But, you know, I think, I think our traffic, yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Corey Chase with Dynamic Traffic. As our architect mentioned, you know, we are still showing it as a full movement access. We're certainly looking forward to furthering the discussions with the town, with CPL, and also with the New York State DOT, relative to the overall access configuration for the site. And we heard the comments provided earlier this evening. We are somewhat bound by the location of the existing pumps for the service station as well as the building. You know, that certainly complicates things a little bit in that, obviously, gas station's a convenience-oriented use, so the ingress and egress to that site needs to be somewhat convenient to make it viable. So, you know, that was really the intention for providing that additional right-in, right-out driveway along the eastern portion of the site, was to provide some additional access not only to the car wash, but to the gas station as well, because they would be losing, their western driveway would be closed. And really, it was our intention to make that easternmost driveway right out only. So basically, if you were exiting the gas pumps and you wanted to continue east on Route 9D, you know, you could utilize that driveway. Certainly, I think it's a substantial improvement from what we presented initially in that, you know, we're really, as we heard the board's concerns at the last meeting, you know, focusing the left-turn access especially to Pappas Lane, and really cleaning up that frontage as well. You know, certainly adjacent to the service station now, it's pretty much just wide-open asphalt and kind of a free-for-all. So, you know, you can see, conceptually, you know, we're trying to install some curving, landscaping and things like that to really channelize those movements and make the primary ingress egress for the property further away from the signal along Pappas Lane. So it creates some separation to that existing signalized intersection and really concentrates those movements. So, you know, we're, like I said, we're really looking forward to working further with the town, its professionals, and the state, you know, as we get further into this, to really have some additional discussions on the access, especially along 9D.
What, can you walk us through the access on the whole stretch of 9D?
Sure. So as I mentioned, you know, we're showing this as full movement now, you know, obviously that's subject to further discussion, you know, both with your office, with the town, and with the state, as to ultimately what this configuration ends up looking like. This driveway is intended to just be a right-in, right-out access, you know, we're obviously channelizing that, provide a channelizing island to restrict left-turn movements in and out with the appropriate signage. The intention would be for this access. be for this access, it's located adjacent to the signalized intersection, would really just be a right-turn egress. You know, again, for given the locations of the pumps, you know, vehicles that want to continue east along 9D, you know, it'd certainly be a convenient movement, rather than having them recirculate around the building to get to Pappas Lane, to then come out and to make that right turn. So, um, that's really the intention along 9D, and then obviously, we have the access points along Pappas Lane, and again, you know, looking to really formalize those access points with curving and landscaping. You can see that, you know, there's substantial curving and channelization provided around these sites to, to really focus those access points. Um, and certainly, you know, the feedback that we heard from the town previously was to provide those interconnections between the sites, so that you can facilitate cross-access, as was mentioned, you know, going all the way from the fast food to the car wash to the gas station, um, and allowing those movements to occur holistically on-site, not requiring anybody to go back out into 9D and then, you know, make another turning movement to the site to make those cross-access maneuvers.
What if you kept the gas station's little thing, rather than pump, but that middle driveway? I mean, somebody could come into the fast food place, go there, or go to the storage place. On the other end of the site, they can come in Pappas Lane, or they can still go in that funny little driveway right next to the pumps, get to the gas station and the car wash. So, I guess I'm starting to question, why is that one needed at all? Because storage has such a small amount of traffic. Seems like that one, you could just eliminate and then allow somebody to come in from the south, go to one of those, either of those two places, maybe even go to the gas station, or come in at the north, and they still have a little extra around the gas pumps. So, it just, I think it would tighten things up and make things a little more coherent in that stretch of roadway to get rid of that driveway. I think that's worth thinking about.
We're certainly open to discussions on that, but, um, you know, from a access perspective, restricting it to right-in, right-out only, you know, obviously limited conflicts with vehicular turning movements, so, uh, we're, you know, it's not like we're considering providing full access here. And, you know, again, just in my professional opinion, providing this right-turn access here, you know, allows for some additional access to both the car wash, to the rear of the gas station, and it's replacing essentially this driveway that would be closing off.
So, you basically want to keep all the points of access as they are?
Well, we don't. I mean, as we're showing it to you here now, you know, certainly that's our intention, that's why we showed them, you know, this is our preferential access. So, again, as I mentioned, it would certainly be open to discussion, but our preference is to have it as shown before you this evening.
Understood, yeah, okay.
The question about the car wash, is there, is there enough space for cars to queue? It looks like you might only be able to fit, like, three or four cars to queue behind it.
Yeah, I think the, you know, again, this is preliminary in conceptual nature. It's, in likelihood, this point right here would be closed off, so all points of access would be through here, and that would allow you to stack cars in this whole area and, you know, queue in a counterclockwise configuration.
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't want to block people who are potentially parked in the spaces.
Yeah, I mean, given that it's a tunnel car wash, uh, unless there's a vacuum stalls, you know, those parking stalls will very likely be utilized at a very minimally, so we're not significantly concerned with the potential for those to actually be, um, parked vehicles waiting to utilize the car wash.
Would it be possible to see in a future drawing, uh, rendering of, of cars queued up, to see how many could, could fit? I'd like to at least get an idea.
Yeah, we can certainly provide-
Because I, because I know some of the local car washes, uh, can get really backed up, so I'd be curi- curious to see how, how that might look.
Yeah, we can certainly lay that out, and yeah, it's a great point. You know, queuing is obviously the, the biggest concern. I think one of the benefits, too, to locating it, you know, we're in the rear of the facility here, um, but with providing this cross-access from Pappas Lane, obviously, the last thing that we want to do is have a car wash queue spill out into that cross-access.
There's also, as far as I know, no car washes on, on 9D in this area, so I could see potentially this being a place where a lot of people go.
Certainly, and we'll, you know, we'll take that into consideration as we look at, you know, potentially, again, closing this off, and we'll certainly add, uh, the vehicle stack to the drawing, so it's, it's visible how many cars we can actually fit in the queue.
I know it's preliminary. Is it an automated twenty-four hours to car wash, or?
It's going to be a tunnel, so it'll be automated. Uh, as far as the hours of operation, I don't know if we're that far along yet.
Anthony's got a foot basis on the, um, we're not that far along yet.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, this is-
One of the neighbors wanted to go to the gas station. We're inheriting that from the existing ownership. We don't own the site yet, there's a lease on that. So, I'm just about closing access. I have no problem with renovating the gas station. I think it's going to be a little hard now, and I still have a tenant. Inheriting from a lease from a past owner. That was one of our issues with it.
But that was another thing, too. Is the, the gas station not part of the-
I'm, I'm gonna, we're gonna own it when we close on the, on the land, but they have a lease existing that I can't terminate till-
No, I'm just saying, is it getting renovated also?
Not right now.
No, okay.
Probably twenty-six, twenty, I think, though, I think they're currently sold in two thousand twenty-seven.
But it, it sounded like the access to the pumps was a little more important, only be, I mean, you know what I mean? Like, that, that particular access there somehow.
I understand if we close, like, one of, maybe we could close a little bit, but I just can't close off till that, till the lease-
No, I, I actually, before, was suggesting, all right, so leave that one open, but get rid of the one in the middle. The, not, not the gas station, the one that just goes straight back to the storage, because theoretically, storage doesn't have that much traffic. That's what I was trying to say, is keep the little gas pump one.
Now, we can talk about where our traffic engineer have no problem with that. The ones to the gas station, I have a little bit more-
That, that's, that I understand. There's like a local need, there's more traffic there.
I agree.
But I'm not a traffic engineer, so.
In the future, when we get the gas station back, I'm sure we'll be back to you guys to renovate that.
But again, I think we do need to be careful about that intersection of Pappas Lane and Route 9D, although it is signalized. It's currently, and will probably get even worse, there are some very dangerous, um, traffic patterns that result by going in and out of there.
And certainly, I think, you know, as part of our proposal, improving the half with the Pappas Lane, you know, it, formalizing it, uh, it's certainly going to be an improvement over the condition that it exists today.
Yeah, and I think improvements to Pappas Lane might enable doing some variations of the current curb cuts and access to the gas station that might be a lot safer than is what's there now.
Yeah, certainly, and I think that, just even conceptually, what we have shown here, you know, curbing basically that whole paved area that's just to the east of the building, and moving that access, uh, further to the south will certainly be a marked improvement over what's there now.
You'll encourage more people to go in via Pappas.
Yeah, exactly, rather than just make-
That I get. That makes sense to me.
Rather-
And to that extent, with Pappas Lane, one of the things that we want to point out is the grading there right now is a little bit all over the place, so it is a costly expenditure, not only to make it nice and make it accessible and all that, but that also plays a role into the site circulation and why one building might be where it is, right? All of these things, again, in concept, it's almost like Tetris, like, can we move this box here and cut off a little bit, but when taking it in totality, because we want it to be good for the town, we want Pappas Lane to be more functional, that plays a role into what can happen with the rest of the property, right? So, it's almost like one thing leads to another, leads to another. So, I just wanted to point that out as well. Pappas Lane is an expensive expenditure, and the intention is to make it as good as possible for the town, but it does affect the rest of the site plan as well.
Yeah.
You guys have not made any formal submissions to DOT at this point, right?
We, you know, we were interested in obtaining the feedback from the town-
Yeah.
From your office before we approached DOT, and I, in an idealistic world, we do it together, you know, and that, you know, we-
Right, I, I just, I just want to remind everybody that the DOT ultimately is going to be the ones that approve all these ingress and egress plans, so all these discussions about closing this one off and opening that one up are probably a little premature at this point. Um, I think it's good discussion, but we, until we get some feedback from DOT, I wouldn't necessarily, you know, assume that they're going to close anything off or open, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, or it could go the other way, and they may have some very specific ideas about how it should work.
Absolutely.
But we don't know what those are yet.
Absolutely.
Plus, with sidewalks along there, and that's a lot of little crossings.
Yeah. All right, well, any other questions from board members at this point? Do you have enough, um, feedback to sort of have an idea of what to come back with, hopefully in, uh, at the August meeting?
Yeah, I think we have enough feedback, and to Chris's point earlier, do we have sort of the, the blessing to proceed with this concept plan? I know we've had some comments, I get some renderings, which, of course, we get the renderings, we show you what the, the facade of the storage looks like, we show you what the cars queuing up at the car wash looks like, but overall, I guess, what we want to know is that this plan works conceptually, and we can proceed without making more significant changes, because, as you could tell, this is a significant, you know, change from the prior submissions. So, we don't want necessarily to, also for the board's time, to submit engineering, architectures, renderings, all that, and, you know, changing one or two things, that makes sense, but if we are then going to play Tetris again and, and move everything around, we don't want to take up so much of the board's time, or become two meetings at a time.
Maybe there's a need to come back with some other concepts before, that, some of the things the board was asking for.
Well, um, concepts in the sense of, as we talked about with the self-storage facility building itself, um, you know, I, I would feel more comfortable without getting into the more engineering aspects of it, to see some conceptual level, you know, architecture worked out, which I think we talked about. So, I mean, I, I'm comfortable with the positioning of the different buildings on the site, just not necessarily the exact, you know, sizes and configurations, but again, some conceptual architecture of those things with, um, you know, a rendering as viewed from 9D, I think would help us visualize what this thing would look like before we get into a lot of details.
So, if, if I'm understanding correctly, forgive me if I'm not, then we can proceed with renderings and more conceptual things, that you have, no pun intended, a better picture of what this is, more so than come back and slice off two-thirds of the storage and all that. We can proceed with this idea with a more visual understanding, and then from there, next meeting, you might say, okay, you know what, full engineering drawings, this, we like this plan, let's see how everything works. CPL might say, we want to see more details and, and get into all that, if I'm understanding correctly. I just don't, we don't want to waste the board's time either, so we want to come back and, for us to all be on the same page.
That's my understanding, is that, uh, the rest of the board in agreement with that?
And in the visuals, is it worth it to try to see some kind of imagery about what the prior storage building would have looked like in comparison to this? It was the three-story one.
Well-
Does the board want to see that or not?
I think we had renderings of what the, the previous one would look like.
There were, there were some renderings, and also, to that extent, um, it's going to be, to be taller and, and, you know, yeah, more set back, but we heard the concerns with visuals and stuff last time, too, so-
Gotcha.
Um, we can always resubmit those renderings, if that's the case.
Yeah, we can just take them out.
We can, we, but it's all in the file. I don't know if you guys have access to the past submissions and everything, but it's all there, the previous iteration of this project.
Yeah, and, you know, in your presentation, you might have some of the visuals, you know, this is what it would have looked like before, here's what it would look like now.
Before and after, yeah.
But I don't think we need to have resubmittals of all the old stuff.
Yeah, but whatever we can do to make literally the picture clearer, absolutely, because, like I said, we want to work with the town, we want it to be nice. It is a gateway in the town of Fishkill, so we want it to be the best development that it could be.
And again, I would, I would say again, maybe for the third or fourth time, see if there's something you could do to get the footprint of the self-storage facility a little bit smaller.
Yeah, we'll look, we'll look into everything and see, see, uh, I think we've showed that we are adept at addressing concerns from the board, so we will continue to do so. All right?
Okay. Liz, anything else?
Yeah, so-
All right.
If you guys-
The reason why the self-storage building's here, Pappas Lane, right, to get access to and renovate it, the grade there is so high, you couldn't access the site by making a left into the right of the site. So, we had to take this, we're basically regrading the site down to Pappas Lane, make it accessible, so we could have the access. I think that's what was important to you guys. That's why we moved the storage building that way, because when the storage building was in the back, there was like basically a retaining wall against Pappas Lane, but you couldn't turn it to the side.
Got it.
Yeah, so I, again, I think we're-
So, now the dirt, we're pushing the dirt to the middle, putting the storage building in the dirt, in the basement.
Gotcha.
So, you have, so now it's going to go, you're going to go, so now you have access from Pappas Lane.
So, sounded to me like the board is comfortable with the proposed location of it in general, just not the exact size and configuration of it.
Yeah, yeah. So, if there's no further questions, uh, which, again, we're more than well willing to answer, we'll definitely have better pictures, more renderings, a better visual concept for the next meeting. Um, I forgot the submission date, but it's on the, it's on, it's on the website, and, um-
Yeah.
I think that's where we stand.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much for your time again.
Thank you.
Thanks for bearing with us. All right. Well, we have one more item. Let's go, let's go, let's do it.
Mr. Glad.
So, um, the next item is Fishkill Self-Storage Site Development Plan, a special use permit. I'd like to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. So, welcome.
Good evening.
Good to see you again.
You as well.
Um, why don't you give us a, a brief summary and discussion of your June twenty-eighth submission?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Alec Glad from the law firm of Cuddy and Fader. I also have Aaron Warner from AKRF, who is our planner here, Peter Wintermeyer, who is our architect, as well as Michael Vois, our landscape architect. Um, we made a brief submission, uh, addressing some of the concerns from last time, which Aaron can come up and highlight, and then we also have some revised elevations on the building design, uh, and some renderings that were hot off the press from Poland this morning. If the board would like to see them, we can show you tonight. Um, but just briefly, kind of an internal, uh, project team goal that we had for this meeting tonight was to hopefully, because I don't believe it's been done yet, um, under the code, have the referral to the building inspector on the use determination. Uh, we've been at this for a while, um, we're starting to run out of new things to say on the use, um, so we would like to finally start moving towards a finality and some decision point on why we're here, which is the use. Uh, but with that said, I'll, if you can go over to Aaron, just to hit some highlights from our submission.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Aaron Warner, AKRF.
Hi, welcome.
So, we did revise the EAF, uh, in response to the comments we got from CPL and discussion that was had at the last meeting. I'll try to be brief. There's three main areas that we updated, and also, you'll notice that the document itself, we made sure we had double underlines for new stuff. We crossed out a change, so that you could follow along with what we had done. Um, so, first thing is, we made sure we updated it to address the two thousand twenty-three comp plan update. Uh, pages twenty through twenty-three, specifically the section about consistency with community plans, now speaks to that comp plan update, not the former plan. Um, on pages two and three of the document, we made sure we bolstered, um, the one fifty nineteen B, uh, one A through C items, um, because there was some discussion about how we weren't really addressing that, um, while, whereas D was, was addressed in the big table that we did, um, A through C were addressed in the narrative. Uh, and we did, in, supplement that with some additional discussion and analysis that actually the attorneys had provided about a year ago, um, where they took some other RB zone areas of the town, um, and compared the surroundings of, or the general characteristics of tho- those areas to the area of this site, and how, and we show how we're very similar in terms of commercial uses up against residential. Those specific commercial uses that are identified in those three areas of the town are more intense uses than a self-storage use. So, just pointing that out. Um, thirdly, in discussions with Ms. Axerson, we, it was pointed out to us that the, uh, Uber Beacon Bridge walkway, as well as the sidewalk, once you turn south after you get over the bridge, is actually doubling as a greenway trail, um, the, the tail, trail of two, two cities, it's called. So, we made sure we identified that correctly. Um, throughout the document, we, it didn't really change the conclusions of visibility. We, we still conclude that the site is most visible from the 9D frontage and right at the end of that Uber Beacon Bridge walkway. So, uh, we can add a photograph that shows more of the frontage. We do have one, um, to address that comment that was in the memo. Um, but that's really the, those are the three main changes that we made to the EAF. Um, so we were hoping, as Alec said, um, with the large Table One comparative analysis table, plus the rest of the narrative that we put together, the, the record we've prepared to date, uh, we, we can get that, uh, referral to the building inspector for some input on the use.
All right. Do you want to go through anything else now, or, um?
Yeah, we're just going to show the elevations, because we did-
Okay.
Have our architects change the building design.
Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect.
Sorry, we're just... Which exhibit is on the computer? Just kind of... Wait a minute.
There you go.
Good evening. Peter Wintermantel from RA Siegel Architects. So we are responding to the comments from the previous meeting, and we broke up the facade, and, sorry, broke up the roof line. So where the brick piers curl across the facade, we extended the brick piers to break up the roof. We also changed the corner, which was previously more storefront and glass. We changed that to brick with smaller punched openings, more, you know, residential scale opening. And then the pitched roof, obviously, as well, to articulate the roof line there. The colors also are softer, so rather than the black siding, you know, it's an earthy green now as well. The signage is also located now below the roof line, and the thought is that that is just something that is painted on the brick itself, not a bold, you know, lit sign, you know, on top of the building. You know, the footprint and everything like that, everything stays the same. It was really just focusing on the colors and then trying to clean up that corner and make it, I guess, you know, a little warmer and less storefront, less self-storage looking. We also have prepared two renderings then as well, so they were hot off the press, so they weren't in the submission. But what we tried to do...
Excuse me.
So we prepared two views, and the one view is from the south property line, which you can see over here on the left side of the page. And in reality, you know, right now, in this view, we're seeing through to the building, the, this line of trees, which we can have our landscape architect speak to, will actually fill in that. So you won't see any of the building, but we wanted to demonstrate, standing at the property line, you can start to see the scale of the building compared to the height of the trees and how it will be blocked. So these trees, this tree line is actually staggered if we look at the landscape plan, so you will see a wall of landscaping. You won't see the building. A renderer is working in Poland, so we were going back and forth, and she, she sent it back. You know, I was trying to stress, yeah, no, show, you know, show the trees as they are in the site plan. She said, but then you don't see the building. Exactly, right. So anyway, this communication, you know, she does the rendering, sends it to us, and I get it in the morning, and then gave the comments. So, but here we are. So, I think it's still helpful to present, just as a sense of the scale of the building, how far back it is from the southern property line, and showing that those trees will eventually then obviously block out everything we're seeing. The other view is from the entry. So again, there's new proposed trees along Route 9D, in addition to the existing growth that's there in the corner. So you really start to get a view of the building on 9D when you're pulling into the driveway. It's not something that you're really going to notice unless you're intentionally looking for it and, you know, making that turn in there, because there is, you know, this additional landscaping in the front. And with that, I should turn it over to Michael to...
Before Michael speaks, could you just turn the images around a little bit so the audience members could see it just briefly?
Can you explain again what we're looking at?
Oh, briefly.
Yeah, this would be from the southern property line, so...
That's the road where you're playing there?
Yeah, that's the road over here, right? So if we're in somebody's backyard on the property line.
Not backyard.
In your backyard. So this, the intent of this was to just show the scale of the building in relation to the trees. But in reality, there's more, there's, you know, these are more densely planted than what we're showing here, so you really won't see the building because of its height and how far it's set back from the property line. When these trees are crawling in, it will be touching and screening.
Thank you.
And then this is just a view of that, sort of, of the driveway.
So, Michael, do you want to give a real quick description of what, of how those trees are going to act as screening?
I think the concept, Michael Vois, Michael Vois collaboration, I think the concept that we presented last time is essentially the same. The building has moved farther north, giving us the opportunity that the herbivores are still where they were in the climate. They moved in sync with the building. But there's a little bit of an open gap, so in that gap, we've planted seven Nissa Sylvatica, which is a native tree. So we're adding some more deciduous trees, and it'll sort of thicken up that sort of thicket between those, the herbivore. You know, the foundation plantings around the building itself are basically all the same plants. We have hydrangea, a little quick fire is a foundation plant, and we have some boxwood, a series of perennials and grasses that are pollinators. And one of the key changes to the planting is the herbivore along 9D, it moved 16 feet farther away from 9D, speaking to Elizabeth's comments from last time. And we put a layered planting in front of those, which is a variety of dogwood, mountain fire dogwood, and then Callicanthus, which is another native plant. And these plants were chosen, one, because they're native, two, because, because of the texture and the size and some of their characteristics. I think they'll read well at the speed of driving off of 9D. And that's really it. It's nothing too fussy. But anyway, that's it. Good?
Thanks, yep.
Any questions? It's like, I don't...
Any questions? No? Well, what I'd like to do, because we have a quite long memo from CPL, and see if we could, yeah, see if we could kind of condense it down to some of the key points of it. And I know a lot of it is actually repeating some things from the, from the previous memo. So Liz, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, let me go ahead. Again, the central issue is that the proposed self-storage use isn't permitted in the RB zoning district, and that the storage use is permitted in three other zoning districts in the town. So there are places where people can develop storage units that comply with the zoning. And then, you know, I'm not going to read all the way through it, but on page two, number three, I touch again on 150-19B, C and D being criterias related to impacts, and trying to come back to, you know, good design and built environment, walkable neighborhoods, distinctive, attractive communities, and a strong sense of place. So, again, reemphasizing, this is the northern gateway corridor shown in the comprehensive plan update objectives map, which extends from Red Schoolhouse Road south to the Fishkill southern border with Beacon, which is right in front of the site. So community character is really important right here. And I don't, you know, this is a fuzzy term. I'm going to let the board look up what is community character, but it's partly about appearances, and it's partly about the feel of an area, and it's also partly about how does the community interact with the rest of the area and whatever's along that road. Let's see, sorry. I was looking at some of the narrative that the applicant presented, which talks a lot about public health, safety, and general welfare. And in there, they're kind of referring to a couple of uses that are allowed in the RB zoning district, such as professional office, rehab, and long-term care facility, medical office, catering hall. Of course, I'm walking the board through the logic of the zoning district again to just try to reemphasize that. And touching on, the comparative analysis table was very helpful. So I kind of dove into it a little bit, spoke to my traffic engineer a little bit about the different uses. I also had spoken with Aaron and asked for the alternative of just the 70-room hotel without a restaurant. And you can see in the comparison table that has substantially less traffic. And then, on page five, I'm talking about some of the uses that are presented in that comparison table, which again, very helpful table, excellent tool. But some of the traffic numbers and other values are based on everything being the same footprint and gross floor area, 51,500 square feet of gross floor area. So that's just kind of a heads up to the board, this memo is to the board, after all, to be mindful of the fact that if you have a use that has that much gross floor area, but you have more traffic, you're probably going to need more parking. So some adjustments would have to be made ultimately in what's the size of development you could really have for a certain kind of use. And then, on page six of 12, I tried to make the best use of the comparative analysis table. And what I did was I took a look back through the zoning tables in the RB zone to look at more appropriate conforming options for the proposed use of the site than the proposed non-permitted storage use. And I did confer with our traffic engineer to be sure that the numbers in the table were consistent, or if he had some views on those things. And based on looking at all the different factors in terms of whether it's allowed in the zone, what are the potential impacts and traffic and, and all that, I came up with a list of 13 uses that I think would be suitable on the site, that wouldn't break the bank as far as impacts. And all of these are much more oriented to this kind of zoning district, because RB is supposed to be about residential uses and businesses that are compatible with residential uses. I'm going to go ahead and use a word that doesn't make any sense, which is a little more people-y than storage, because it is a neighborhood area. It's also an area where people really are coming and going, because they want to go into Beacon either on car or on foot. Or, or maybe they're just taking a walk from the north side of 84 and crossing their sidewalks there. So I came up with a list. I'll go through it very quickly, and you'll start to hear a repeating refrain. A is a 70-room hotel, again, allowed in RB, but it's a community recreational or tourist-oriented use, which I believe is preferred. I'm recommending that. A restaurant or other place serving food or beverage, which really should be 7,000 square feet to be consistent and comparable with one of the scenarios they offered. Again, that's a community and tourist and residentially oriented use. Professional office, again, community and residentially oriented use, a place of work. People get to walk to work. D, a congregate care facility, is also community and residentially oriented, and there is one nearby, so, and there is a demand for that kind of use. Single-family detached dwellings is also community and residentially oriented. It would also kind of add some more housing stock to the supply in Fishkill. And as we know from Dutchess County's housing study in 2022, there's a high cost of housing in this area. So having a few more units would probably help the supply and the price. Nursing or convalescent home is also community and residentially oriented. There's also a regional need for rehabilitation facilities, huge waiting list, even for people who aren't seniors, who just have an injury and they need to recover. Private cancer, seasonal residential use only, also community tourist and residentially oriented. And it's also kind of becoming a new kind of, like Airbnbs and all these other options for lodging now. Having a little camp or cabin type place is becoming desirable for touristy areas. And also, anything that has to do with lodging also serves the local residential community. If somebody's having relatives visit or having any kind of an event, they need a place for people to stay. Tourist home or boarding house, again, community tourist and residential. Farm use is community and tourist oriented. It could be paired with a business use. I realize that's not a big moneymaker. Design multiple use development, again, community tourist and residentially oriented. Mobile home park, I know you're going to be a little surprised, it is community and tourist oriented. Over in Sullivan County, they are having mobile home parks now with little cabins where people will go and just stay during the summer. Mobile home, so that's the mobile home park. And then farm produce stand nursery greenhouse, also community and tourist and residential. And then private nonprofit community fraternal recreation club. I realized that the traffic numbers were based on, like a health club, which makes sense, that I understood from speaking with our traffic engineer. Anyway, my point there is that there are a lot of decent uses on the site where somebody could have a decent return on investment, and things that would definitely fit better in terms of the character of the area and the nearby neighborhood uses. And then, as Aaron mentioned, there is a Hudson River Valley Greenway, that's a state program. Hudson River Valley Greenway Trail, Trail of Two Cities. It basically runs from down on the waterfront in Beacon, comes up through that part of Fishkill. It basically is, runs along the sidewalks, so it's on both sides of the road, and then, of course, goes across the bridge and continues into the heart of Newburgh. So that is a state-designated scenic resource. And then, let's see. Those were my main points. I think I've said plenty about scenic and aesthetic, and based on, you know, what we have in front of us, I know that months ago, we had considered a secret positive declaration. But there are some things that had changed in the environmental records, so I tried to, we now know a lot more about the potential development in the development site. So we went through, I went through fully AF Part 2, and winnowed it down to, we don't have an archaeological issue anymore. We know there's no wetland on the site, things like that. So I did prepare a draft. It's really, at this point, I feel, for the board to think about. I don't think that we're ready to take any kind of secret action tonight, but I can't imagine going in another direction. And correct me if I'm wrong, Dominic, but you don't have to have a whole huge list of potential large impacts to do a secret positive declaration, I believe.
You only need one.
Okay.
And I was hoping, really hoping, that we'd have time to actually go through the EAF Part 2 and the draft updated neg deck tonight, but we definitely do not have time to do that. So what I'd like to suggest is that everybody take a look through them, and that we make this really the question of the EAF and the potential POSDEC being the main part of discussion on this item at the August 17th meeting. Again, as Liz had mentioned, you know, use is really a key issue that the board needs to consider. And I think that the best way to address the use issue is, among others, is in the secret processes by requiring an environmental impact statement by adopting a positive declaration. So again, since we don't have time to really even look at those documents tonight, I really hope that board members and the applicant will take a good, close look at these documents, and that we have a, you know, a good thorough discussion of them, and have the board possibly ready to take an action on the POSDEC at the August meeting.
And if I, sorry to chime back in, but there were, my reasoning for page 11, trying to speak about those different uses, is partly to speak to the issue of use, how many uses there are in the area, but also because these are possible alternatives that we could look at.
So before, before we let the applicant say some more, any thoughts from board members, either on... any thoughts from board members either on the memo that Liz went through or just the overall sort of idea of next steps of what we need to do? I know it's going to wait.
Could we get this on the agenda earlier for the next meeting? Always get this last. And this really deserves everybody's...
They come in, unfortunately, Anthony, but I can do that if you'd like.
I really deserve every...
My suggestion would be that we consider this really a continuation for the next meeting and put it as close to the beginning of the meeting as possible. And I'd rather not have more back and forth or more submissions from the applicant on, well, here's our reaction to that memo and here's an update. Let's just focus on these documents because I really think the board needs to have a clear mind to move ahead with the secret documents.
I would just suggest reading them carefully because we have looked through them and we noticed that there's some contradictory information in there as far as stuff about not enough information is provided on the building, things like that. And there's a potential large impact for endangered species when the memo from CPL says that what we said last time seems fine and that we're proposing that tree clearing restriction on the site plan to address that. So why is that a large impact? Just consider what it says.
So, yeah. I mean, what you could do if you want to, if you need to just do a submission, is to put some of those things down on paper and submit them. But I mean, I'd rather not back and forth on each and every single little detailed item like that, but more focus on the overall direction that this is appearing to be going in, which is to a POSDEC.
Would it be helpful if I provide the Word document for the POSDEC? If there were comments on that?
Sure, I mean, you could.
But I don't know if that's what the board wants or just maybe let them write a...
What I don't want to see is, again, sort of having the applicant, in effect, do their own version of what would become a NAGDEC probably, which we've already seen before. I just think we're going back and forth too much on this and we're never going to get anywhere unless we just really move ahead.
Okay, go with what we have then.
So please.
Response to comment.
I'll look. I'll double check.
Numbered items. And then we could just point to where in our materials we've addressed this. There's a lot here.
That would be helpful.
I'm not sure how much new information you're going to have. You're just going to be asking us to reorganize studies that have already been done. So I don't...
When I was looking through this, I was just saying to myself, gee, this is a really good document. If it only had a labeling called an environmental impact statement on the cover, we could go right there. But I know there's a process that needs to be done.
Unfortunately, they changed those regulations, otherwise...
Yeah.
The issue that it is now.
And again, we have to realize that if we do a POSDEC, then the next step would be scoping. And that's a whole process where what actually would go into the environmental impact statement would be fleshed out in the scoping document, which the applicant would have the opportunity, actually the responsibility, I guess now, under the new regs, to put together a draft scoping document. So it's all interrelated to what we come up with in the POSDEC. So sure, I mean, if you have specific comments or thoughts on the draft documents, that's fine. But I think from the board's perspective, we're not going to spend time on going back and forth trying to compare your thoughts with our thoughts. We're just going to move ahead and start working with it.
The only quote-unquote new information we have to submit is just the renderings that we got.
Yeah. And actually, that would be good. Yeah, we'd like to see those.
Yeah, then we have the narrative response that will, if we do a POSDEC, can try to help you organize yourselves in the big submission in a functional direction to how what you may have identified as potentially large.
Yeah, that would be good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I just want to chime in about the 150-19B. And I know you asked, and this is something that's been on my mind. You asked when we're going to ask the building inspector to give us his input. And that was going to be a question I asked tonight was, this is a part of this. This is part of this proposal here. We have to figure out this 150-19B. And when we first started this, this is brand new to all of us here. We've never done this before. So I was not comfortable. And I know the applicant was hoping that we could give a determination rather quickly, but I wasn't comfortable with that. And what I really wanted was information. And it seems like we're getting bombarded with information. And my question to the board, really, and to our consultants, is at what point do we think we might feel comfortable in getting to that 150-19B determination? Of course, we need input from the building inspector. And when that time does come, I would love for him to actually be here with us so that he can, so we can pick his brain because I think it's important to find out what he thinks. But I'm wondering, and this is just putting it out there to everybody, when would we feel more comfortable making that determination? Because for myself, I was not comfortable in the beginning at all because I had no clue how to make that determination. And now, as we've gotten, got hundreds of pages from you guys, we've gotten lots from our consultants, it feels like we're getting closer to being able to make a determination. And if we go, whatever NAG or POSDEC, do we have to wait for the whole process to be done before we make that? You know, these are questions that are in my head and I would like to know where we're at and what people think here because I'm not sure if we need to actually wait till the whole process is over before we come up with that determination or not. So just something for our board members and our consultants, if anybody has any idea on this. Because I think at the end of the day, we still have to make this determination. We could go through this whole POSDEC, NAGDEC, we could do all this stuff. And then at the end of the day, it still comes down to that determination.
Dominic, would you like to repeat something that you said about that several meetings ago?
Yes, I prepared a memo early on in this project in connection with the determination. And board members, correct, it's an essential part of this process. Determination essentially is a granting of a special use permit for the site, for the use. And in particular, I mean, it's a step that requires an environmental review so the board can make that determination, having all the information that you would need in front of you in connection with the environmental review. So the environmental review is directly integrated into the use determination. And my recommendation, it's not spelled out in the code, but my recommendation to the board would be to refer this matter to the building inspector at such time that you're ready to have a public hearing. Because typically, at the point where you're ready to have a public hearing, you have enough information that's in front of you for the public to have their input. The building inspector also gets an opportunity to have his input as well. And that way, he can do it based on the record that the public would have available to them as well at that time. The building inspector's opinion is not determinative. This board gets to make the decision, but you have to ask the building inspector as to what his opinion is as part of the process.
And again, I'll say, I think I've said it before, and Dominic, I think I've said it before, that my opinion is that the best way to make this determination about the use issue is through an environmental impact statement. And I think, Dominic, you've said before that we really can't make the final determination on the use issue until the secret process has been completed.
Correct.
But having said that, I think you're right that we certainly could ask for the building inspector's input on the use question at such time as a public hearing is scheduled, which could be a concurrent public hearing on the environmental impact statement and the action.
It should be, yes.
Yeah. And so I think hopefully that kind of begins to address your question of when. It's not so much when would the board be comfortable with making the determination on the use. It's more of a process question on when can we make that determination? And I think the answer is we can't make the determination until after the secret process is completed, which could mean if we went with a NAGDEC, once we make the NAGDEC determination, then very soon after that, we could make a determination on 150-19B. If we make a positive declaration and require an environmental impact statement, that's a different process. And that, I think, gives us a lot more ability to look at alternative uses on the site and in particular, the question of use that Liz has been trying to focus us on so much in the last couple of memos that she's put together. So it's really more than just looking at all the specific site impacts of a self-storage facility. It's the overall impact, some of which may be generic, some of them may be site-specific, of the use issue. And again, my opinion, the best way to look at all that in a comprehensive way is through an environmental impact statement. So that about sums it up, I think. Anyone have anything to add because it's getting very late? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
See you in August.
So that'll be August 17th with the change in the meeting dates.
Yeah, we won't be here. Go get Teller and then I hope someone's recovered from vacation.
Okay.
And speaking of which, just want to remind the board that I have my associate, Sarah Wilson, who will be attending the August meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion?
All right, we would accept the motion to adjourn.
That's my motion, sir.
Is there a second? Robbie seconds it. All in favor, say aye, aye, aye.